To order. At this time, would everybody please rise for a moment of silence and please keep in mind Tennessee? Well, now I have the presentation of colors. We have from the Matanzas High School, we have Cadet Sergeant First Class Fionn Daly, Cadet Sergeant First Class Hartz, Cadet Staff Sergeant Landon Smith, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Arabella Allen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You can retire the colors now. Can play it? Hold on for a second. Are you ready? Thank you. Delayed here. Thought about it. There we go. Now we got it.
It's coming through my computer, but it's as loud as I can make it.
All right. My arms bursting in. It proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave. All right. Please. Forward. Mark. Color. All right. Please be seated.
I think we should do that every meeting.
And thank you for your assistance with that. Are we going to go with roll call, starting all the way down to the end of the dice?
Bella Tigi, present.
Roymara Lewisheat, present.
Christie Chong, present.
Will Furry, present.
Sally Hunt.
Colleen Conklin, present.
And Cheryl Maserow, present.
Kathy Middlestadt. All right. This evening, we have a few proclamations. The first that we have is for Child Abuse Prevention Month. I believe we have someone from the Guardian Adlitem that would like to read this proclamation for us. Would you please introduce yourself? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Carrigan. I'm a volunteer recruiter for the Guardian Adlitem office in the Seventh Judicial Circuit.
Welcome. Welcome. Do you have a copy of the proclamation?
I do not.
Okay. Would you like to use mine and you can read it?
Thank you.
There you go.
I was told it would be.
It probably will be. It will be, but I'm betting the paper's good right now. Right where you were with the mic.
A proclamation of the Flagler County School Board recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas in federal fiscal year 2021, 3.9 million reports were made to Child Protective Services. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most vulnerable and valuable resources, excuse me, our most valuable resources, and will shape the future of Flagler County. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the physical, social, and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the School Board of Flagler County, Florida, that we do hereby recognize April 23, 2023, as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all our children and families.
I don't, thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, I appreciate you being here to read that. For those of you that are in the audience and those who are watching, the Guardian Adlitem program is always looking for volunteers, and they need them desperately because we have a lot of children that aren't treated appropriately in Flagler County, right here where we all live. And you take the training, and the work they do is immeasurable. It truly is to help the families and the children. So if you've got time and you could dedicate that to helping even just one family or one child, it'd be very beneficial. But the Guardian Adlitem, you can get in touch with them at the building next door. Is there anything else I should say?
I appreciate the opportunity to talk about us. As you know, we are here, they're in the audience, we have certified Guardian Adlitem around you, but you don't know who we are because we don't discuss our cases in public. We sign nondisclosure disclosures. These are children that have been abused. And these. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, just to share some local data, I was seeing in the other resolution that there's 43 cases of child neglect, abuse, or abandonment involving 89 children.
That's updated to 44 today.
Forty-four.
Since the day it has gone through, unfortunately.
Since today. Thank you for sharing that.
Okay. So April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. It is also Volunteer Appreciation Month. So we're kind of putting a push on. It kind of connects. So I'm not sure if we have anybody that can read that proclamation.
Of course we do. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Very glad to have you here. And you can introduce yourselves.
Really, no introduction needed, right?
That is true.
Hi, I'm Suzie Gamblane. I'm the Executive Director for Flagler Volunteer Services.
Hi, I'm Judy Mizella, Volunteer Coordinator for Flagler Volunteer Services.
Steve Ripley, President, Flagler Volunteer Services.
Denise Calhoun, I'm on the board.
Welcome.
Glad you're here. Do you have a copy of?
I do, I do not.
Well, I have one that you are welcome to take.
Okay. Be more than happy. Okay. A proclamation of the Flagler County School Board recognizing Florida Volunteer Month, National Service Recognition Day, and National Volunteer Week. Whereas April is Florida Volunteer Month, National Service Recognition Day is April 4th, and National Public School Volunteer Week is April 17th through the 21st, 2023. And whereas National Volunteer Week was established as the official time to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers at the local and state and national levels. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service experiences through hundreds of community service organizations, including Flagler Volunteer Services. And whereas volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our schools, our cities, counties, and our nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas volunteering enhances the lives of volunteers, increases self-esteem and physical well-being, provides opportunities to learn new skills and abilities, and offers the chance to meet new friends and associates. And whereas schools, nonprofits, charities, community, and faith-based groups, national service programs, and volunteer centers such as Flagler Volunteer Services have joined with state and local governments to celebrate and praise volunteers who have given tirelessly and selflessly to service, to the service of others. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the School Board of Flagler County, Florida, that we do hereby recognize April 2023 as Volunteer Month, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of volunteer service in our country, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Okay. Like, like I said earlier, these kind of connect, but our county survives because of our volunteers. And many of you have volunteered with this organization. I'm certain some of us have already volunteered too with this organization.
Yes. Thank you.
And the key is to continue to do so. Because we cannot get by just working and doing our jobs without giving back, and this is a great opportunity to give back to the entire community. So thank you very much, all of you.
Major kudos, Judy and Suzie, your leadership with volunteers and all that you do, not just in our schools, but our community in times of, you know, troubles, hurricanes, and everything else, just the leadership that you've provided everybody else in this community, just outstanding, and really appreciate both of you.
Thank you very much. And I did just, I just wanted to share just a couple of quick statistics, just to give you some numbers. So in 2022, we had 1,548 volunteers that reported serving 67,569 hours in our community. Based on the value of a volunteer hour in the independent sector, that's over $2 million in value. But even if you go minimum wage, it's still $750,000 in value. So it's just a tremendous value to our community. Only, that's only about half of what we were pre-COVID. So we are building, and we are seeing those numbers go up. So it's definitely a steady growth at this point, and we're very excited about this, this year for us. We feel like 2023 is definitely a good turning point for us. There were 481 volunteers last year in the school district. As you know, there was not as many as normal because of COVID. We're happy that we're back to a more normal year this year, and we're also building in the school district. We do have a couple of programs that we run, the Reading Pals Program. We had 91 volunteers in 2022 that worked with kids in VPK through third grade. And the Giving Store Program, which serviced them during the holidays to teach them the joy of giving. We had 72 volunteers that, that worked at that. We did bring one of our volunteers here with us today, Monica Topher. And we, do you want her to, do you want to come on? We just wanted to let you know that she works in our office, but she works for you. What she does on a day-to-day basis is she inputs all of the school volunteer data into the system. She tracks all of their applications, all of their hours, and all of that for the school district. So just since the pandemic, she has processed more than 1,000 volunteer applications for the school district. And she's updated numerous others and spent more than 1,300 hours. So we just wanted to say thank you to Monica, and we wanted to have her stand in front of you because she does this work in our office. We see her all the time, but she does it for you. So.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
That's why I asked you to be here.
Yeah. She's like, why am I here?
Because I asked you to be here.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move to Spotlight 3.01, the Superintendent's Strategic Plan Spotlight.
Thank you, Board Chair. And for the public, we are working through some technical challenges right now. The Flagler Schools Annual Report is a video rendition that I will be sharing with you as my spotlight this evening. So Madam Chair, if we can go ahead and move on to the next two spotlights and give our tech team time to resolve the challenges they're having over there. So we would go on to 3.02, please.
Okay. 3.02. We have the Voters' Guide Cover Design Contest Winner and Supervisor of Elections, Katie Landhart, is here to make the presentation. Come on up.
I was like, where is she?
Oh, FPC got it again.
No way. Again.
Think so. Congratulations.
The artiste.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Well, good evening, School Board. Thank you very much for having us here today. This is the 13th Annual Voters' Guide Cover Design Contest. And would you know, again this year, you have selected FPC. So I don't know. It's been eight years since Matanzas, Matanzas won, and I feel like next time, you know, I was there and I said, please think about Matanzas when you're looking at the designs. But maybe next year, right? We had such, such great designs this year, and I'm very, very proud of our winning student who's here with us today. I gave you all a copy, and I tried to distribute these before the meeting, but if you did not get one, I'm going to leave a big stack on the back table back there. So make sure you pick one up as you're walking out tonight if you'd like to see it. And I also have a certificate of appreciation for Talafia English. She is a student of Mr. Beckett.
Of course.
At FPC. And I just wanted to recognize her tonight for her talent. You know, our students and this contest has been going on, like I said, for 13 years, and it comes harder and harder each year, I think, for you all to select a design. They are extremely talented, and I think she's a little nervous. She didn't want to speak, but I just wanted to have her here with me tonight and recognize her. And I have a $50 gift card for me personally for Target for her, so that she can go shopping and get a little something, okay? So we're going to get a picture, but thanks again.
Becky, you got to get in the picture.
Yes.
Come on now.
Well, this, is that name?
No.
Should be good.
Okay.
All right, here we go. In one, two.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Again, FPC.
Awesome.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Okay, thank you.
Just a little explanation that we had an awful lot of designs to pick from this year, far more than ever before.
Most I ever remember.
Right. Most I've seen. And we vote, we don't know who did what. We just vote at a school board meeting, and it just seems that FPC just keeps coming back to us. Nothing against Matanzas, they were great designs too, but I'm sure Mr. Beckett understands. And.
Because Mr. Beckett's amazing.
He is amazing. Literally amazing. So thank you all. All right. We're going to go to 3.03, the Boys and Girls Club Spotlight. We have us, with us this evening, actually, an old friend of mine, literally. Is Mr. Joe Sullivan the Chief Professional Officer?
Yes.
Would you introduce the rest of your group to us?
I'd be honored to, and, and yes, we do go back quite a ways. Janaye Matthews from the Hard Rock is our Board President. Joe Hearn of Joe Hearn Events is our past president. And Ms. Carolyn here, who I want to have most of the time as the true hero, she's our club director at Rimfire. So I'm sorry it's taken us so long to get in to see you guys, but we have nine clubs, and eight of them are in Volusia. And this one here has been great. It goes back to 2011. We don't have a lot of the challenges here that we have in other clubs because the kids don't have to be transported. They get dinner every day. The restrooms are all in good condition. Some of our old buildings are some special challenges. So it's been a great partnership, and I just wanted to be here to thank you guys. And we're different. We're there for kids every day after school. They don't have to pay hardly anything, and this is all we do. And I'm an old boys' club kid, and when I was a club kid, it was about gym and swim and fun stuff. We're not as much fun as we used to be. We're about academics, we're about character, and we're about healthy lifestyles. So I wanted to turn it over to Carolyn because, again, she's the true hero with, in the, in the front line with the kids every day. So only 20 minutes.
I just want to say thank you for what you all have done for us. Thank you for giving our boys and girls a place to come and thrive, to be happy, to know that they can express themselves, and that they can come and have fun. And not only that, that they can learn, know that it's not all about playtime, but about academics. And they know that without, they have to do the work first before they can play. And, you know, you work hard, then you can play hard. So we thank you all for having, letting a boys and girls, Rimfire Boys and Girls Club have a place to thrive and to be themselves. Thank you so much.
So glad you're here. So glad you're here.
Yeah, she's, she is our true hero, and we are so blessed to have Carolyn representing this community. You know, she said it, she hit it right on the money. We truly are a place for kids to thrive, to grow, to look at opportunities for their future. And with so many families in Flagler County, the need for our club is just critical. Many families are, both parents are working day and night, or single parents, they don't have that time. They don't want their kids on the street just running the neighborhood. They want them in a quality, good environment where they're getting their homework done, they're getting nutritional value, they're learning some great soft skills as they go out and face this world. And we're just super excited. I know our president has big plans this year, and we're super excited to grow in this community. We feel with all the families you have, there's definitely a need for at least one to two more clubs in, in Flagler County. And we look forward to being more active in the community and seeing our faces out there. And anytime, you're welcome to stop by the club, please. It will change your life just visiting with these children and just the impact that, that we have on them. So thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to our President, Janaye.
I'm just going to echo what Joe said. Thank you so much for your partnership. Education is something that's near and dear to my heart, and I got involved with the Boys and Girls Club movement because I saw that there was a need. Again, like every day, we are saving lives. And Joe likes to give out our annual report, and it's, it's a bunch of statistics, and it gives you the, the kind of the meat and potatoes and the numbers. But when you actually get out there and visit the clubs and see the kids and see the difference that we're making every day in their lives, that, you know, somebody like Ms. Carolyn there for them every day after school for homework, there to give them encouragement, there to, to help them with their day-to-day. And being in school these days is just not the same. I always say, back in my day, it was a little bit different, and it just has gotten a little bit harder and harder for our youth. And, you know, being a part of this organization, just being able to wrap our arms around the kids, you know, that's what we're there for. And this year, I'm looking to grow and wrap our arms around more children because they need us. And again, thank you so much. It's, it's a phenomenal partnership to be able to partner with the School Board.
We're in the same business.
Yes, we're in the same business, as Joe likes to say.
Taking care of our youth.
We're, we're a village raising our kids. So thank you.
That's right.
I really want to thank you all because you're right. You go one day to the Rimfire Club, and it's amazing, the things that you accomplish in really a small amount of space with lots of kids. Lots of kids, they're busting out the seam. And, you know, it's been a desire of mine to have a second club here in Flagler County for years, years. I mean, I think your Power Hour is super because it's, it gets the kids settled, focused, they get some more, you know, tutoring, which is perfect, and help. And then they get to play, play hard, and that's so important. So hopefully, over the next couple of years, we can pin down something somewhere in this county, because I know the kids are here, and we can expand your program. Dr. Conklin, you have something to add?
I just wanted to share for those that may not know, some people may not know, but Joe's Boys and Girls Club has been a part of Flagler County for a very, very long time. The first club, how long ago was that, over in Carver? 98. So after that, and then it moved over to Rimfire. But just can't say enough about the program and the opportunities provided to kids. I 100% would support, look forward to kind of growing the, and expanding because the need is there. The, the need is just tremendous. So the parents really need those opportunities for students, their children. So just can't thank you enough, and thank you for everything you do for us.
Thank you again. If you need us, you know where we are. Get in touch with us, okay? All right, thank you. Are you ready?
We have an update on the.
Are we ready to go back up, or?
Still working on it, Madam Chair.
All right. Now, we have the approval of the minutes. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, they will be considered approved? Adoption of agenda changes. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I need to identify, I'll be abstaining from item 7.02 because it, it contains a purchase order or a payment order for Emery Riddle, who I'm employed by, and I will file the appropriate paperwork.
Okay. Got that. Is there any other additional changes to the agenda?
Chairman Saro, at this time, I believe we need to have a motion to suspend the rules with respect to the agenda so that we can go ahead and add Agenda Item 20.01, which would be for the Board Liaison Change. So if I could have a motion to suspend the rules.
I need a motion.
Move Approval.
I need a second.
Second. All right. There is no debate on a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of adding an agenda item that was not listed on the meeting, which is for the Board to discuss a liaison change under, it will become, School Board Item 20.01. Board, I have, if you refresh your agenda, you will find it on there. So I have a motion and a second, so we will take it to a vote. It is not a matter to be discussed.
Okay. All those in favor of this change to our agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you. The agenda has been updated. It will be discussed under 20.01.
All right. We are now up to, well. All right, we are now up to, well, are we ready or we're not? No. Are we gonna go into public comment? Public comment, 6.01. Do we have public comment?
We do have public comment. At this time, Mike Cochiella is going to be discussing book banning. So, that would be the school board item on book review.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board. Mike Cochiella again for Palm Coast. I want to talk a bit about the issue of book burning, the same thing as banning. We have a group in town, and I mentioned this before, I think. Don't quite know what their name is. I've heard them called Moms for Libotomy, but whatever they are, they are simply adamant in trying to disrupt public education and to denigrate and somehow or other get good, honest schoolteachers to leave the system. Because what they're doing is they're essentially calling schools and teachers and principals incompetent because when books are introduced to the school, they are reviewed by media specialists, and the teachers know what they are, and I'm sure the principal knows what they are. But apparently, the group protests those books, and then it's bumped up to a school committee. And if it passes that, then they bump it up to the district committee. And if it passes that, they're gonna bump it up to the superintendent. And if it passes that, they're gonna bump it up to you. So, they're not gonna quit. And it's only a few of them are doing this. And it is a direct assault on public education, and you know it is. Whoever is with, whoever agrees with that, you know it's disrupting education. And you're trying to disrupt public education. You're trying to denigrate public schools, to, I guess, support the governor's push to take public school money and make everything private or homeschool, something like that. So, I'm asking this board, and I'm asking the superintendent to stand tall, to have courage, and this board to have courage, to stop this group in their tracks. Tell them if we thought the books were pornographic, we would not have introduced them to the school in the first place. And also, I wanted to make the final point. If I were to take excerpts from the Bible, and I were to show those excerpts to you, you would say it's pornography, but it's not because you take excerpts out of context. Well, what this group is doing is they're taking from a national source excerpts from these books. They have not read the books, but they take excerpts from these books, and they present it as pornographic without context. And that's the key to literature is context. It is not pornography unless you feel in your heart it is pornography, and then you got a problem because these, many of these books are national bestsellers. They are certainly, many of them are classics. I read the classics for sure when I went to school, and somehow or other, I managed to raise a family quite nicely and, you know, do all the things that normal people do. I wasn't twisted or groomed. So, I'm asking you to have the courage to stop this group, stop it in its track. They're costing the system money, they're costing the system time, and they are dumbing down, or if you give them into them, they will simply dumb down students who need to compete against all other students, students in this country and in the world for jobs. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
We do.
Okay, okay.
I'm like, where'd you go?
All right, your next speaker is Federico...
Good evening, my name is...
Whoa, 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 whoa. Oh, sorry. I have to call everybody up, sorry. Ma'am, I need to call people up.
Maybe it's her.
And are you Federico Grosso? No.
Nope, it's not.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Mr. Grosso, that is not on the agenda, so I have to skip to Janet Sullivan. But you will be called at the end, Mr. Grosso, okay?
Public comment, yes, public comment right now is only on agenda items.
So, Janet Sullivan, and she's speaking on the book that is subject to, with the board for review, the book Sold.
Hi there. I'm Janet Sullivan at 35 Nantucket Drive in the county. Thank you for all you do. I know that your service is a sacrifice for you and your families and all the time that you spend. I had the privilege of observing a district book review of Nowhere Girls a couple of weeks ago. And I want to tell whoever is responsible what a fabulous process and what a fabulous and impressive experience that was. The county, the school board, the district has created a great process for the review of these books, and I was grateful to have the opportunity to observe it. My understanding is that there's also a part of a process where a parent can say, "I don't want my child to read this book." And that's where I think it ought to stand then, is I'm not sure why other parents have deemed the right to say what they're, what other children can read or cannot do. I think it's, if they want parental control, you already have the process in place. I wasn't very articulate, but I think you get my drift. Thank you.
The next presenter is going to be Stacy Smith. Ms. Smith was actually at our three o'clock workshop and due to the length of time, was unable to speak, so we are permitting her the opportunity to speak now instead of at the end since she was there for the entire time up until the bitter end and had to leave. So, she is speaking on Agenda Item 6.01 that was discussed at the workshop and 6.02, the school improvement plan and the mental health.
Thank you, Board. Welcome to our evening. I would like to talk a little bit about, when we talked about item Agenda 6.01, I think that Ms. Middlestat has done a great job on capturing kids' hearts. I think that it was apparent during that time when all of the elementary school principals came, with the exception of one, all talked about capturing kids' hearts and how wonderful that program has been. And I just would like to say I sat through that training as a teacher in Flagler County. I implemented it in my classroom, even though we didn't have a lot of support at the school that I was at. But that program is amazing, and I'd like to thank Superintendent Middlestat for bringing that to our schools. Secondly, I would like to also speak out on 6.02 where we discussed the violence in schools. And what I'd like to say about that is that I am on a leave of absence due to some violence in the school setting. I am afraid to be in my classroom. And I will tell you that as a teacher, we do do that MTSS process. However, that paperwork doesn't really end up anywhere. And what you find is teachers are not willing to do all of that process work because we see kids in that process for years, some starting in kindergarten all the way through sixth grade, and those students still have no real solution to their problem. And so, when we're looking at alternatives, I know we're looking at that sixth grade and up, but I'm also concerned about my elementary schoolteachers who are afraid to come up and speak about that and who look at that MTSS process as very lengthy, many hours, paperwork, the things that have to be done only for students to end up really not having those services. And so, when we look at that, I would be willing to be part of that conversation to move forward because I think that we could do a better job. And I think that we need to look at that as a whole and find placement for all students so that safety can be on campus for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jennifer Vale regarding 16, which is the book challenge.
Hi, good afternoon. I mentioned already most of, sorry, I mentioned most of what I wanted to say earlier today, so I just want to reiterate that. I also want to bring up, a lot of times they say, "Well, these books can't be read in public." Well, it's a high school book, not meant for smaller children. So, for instance, today, it just so happens I had to bring my kids with me. So, if someone read it out loud, it's not meant for my elementary age children. That's why it can't be read out loud. It's meant for high schoolers. So, I think that kind of makes that point invalid, you know, that's not a reason to allow a book to be read out loud. I also wanted to bring up, there were comments made about the committees, and I just hope that you guys do actually consider them. I know that there was mention that they weren't signed and things like that, so they don't hold enough weight. But I don't think that, I think that you guys should value the time it took for people to show up to these meetings, value the time of the administrators, media specialists, and teachers, because this is like 6:00 PM meetings after school hours. I don't know if they get paid for that or not. I doubt it's enough if they do. So, just please don't discredit their hard work. And then I also agree that the superintendent is doing a great job, so I hope you guys will consider that and allow for public comment before making decisions on, because I know that you guys were planning on scheduling it kind of quickly, so I hope you guys do wait for public input on that. Thank you.
The next speaker is Allison Lauderdale regarding the book challenge. Welcome.
Can we just get started?
Yep.
Some people seem to think that anyone who cares about what our children in public school are given as reading material is just some silly person wringing their hands. As a parent, I don't feel safe sending my kids to the public schools here. I don't think any public schools are safe. That's because from everything I've seen, even when schools proclaim good intentions, they're actually poisoning minds and abusing children. I'm a published author, and I have worked with people all over the United States and the world who expose these predatory practices. Six years ago, I alerted the district to the dangers of these things and was rewarded with online harassment and banning. Now, I'm back because others finally see what I saw. The average person doesn't look into these things. They don't have time, they aren't on a lot, online a lot, and don't even know where to look. I do. The implementation of SCL is abuse. This book is abuse. You can hide behind buzzwords, and normal people will believe you. But make no mistake, SCL, these books, inclusive books, are so-called, and which we have read them, they're grooming, and it's abuse. The people in charge of creating these programs admit it. Members of the North American Man Boy Love Association, a pro pedophile group, created these programs and these book lists. You can look it up. WPATH is a committee that pushes these programs and book lists into schools, and their members are openly members of a group called the UNIC Archive, which is a group that publishes stories fetishizing child sexual abuse and torture publicly, online. You can look it all up. Your kids can go to these websites, by the way. It is a couple clicks away even at school. You might not know how, but they do. The district is pathetically behind on internet safety in schools. I joined the committee to review challenged books months ago. I keep being told they haven't assigned my committee a book yet. My suspicion is that despite the many challenged books, my committee never will be assigned a book, since the people in charge are well aware of me, and one man even verbally attacked me in public over it. The guidelines include many things, but one I noticed was that we must keep in mind the child's interests. Will a child be interested in this book? I maintain that if a child is on their own expressing interest in sexual abuse, then the people given charge of that child are mandated reporters and should be alerting authorities, not normalizing that interest. Honestly, how can someone sleep at night knowing that our children are being groomed in this way, all in the name of being nice? How can the members of this board honestly live with themselves? How can people bring their kids in on purpose so that we can't read the book? Because now, I can't read any of this book because people brought in their children, so I can't prove to you. All you have to go on is people mocking groups.
All right, I'm gonna have to stop there, your time's...
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you for finally letting me talk.
Anybody else?
Okay, the next speaker is Shannon Rambo, again, on the book challenge.
Hello, Board. Good evening, everybody. I'm Shannon Rambo. I'm the chapter chair for Moms for Liberty. Yes, I did not challenge this book, but I know people that have. And I just want everybody to know that it is their right to challenge the book, and we're supposed to be talking about Sold right now. So, I'm gonna talk about Sold. I've gone through the whole process, the whole entire process of challenging the books, contacting the principals, going to the book review committees, going to the district committees, meeting with Ms. Moore. I have met with everybody, okay? I have done the whole process. I want parents to know what the process is, and I want them to know it's their right. Aren't we here for transparency? I'm just asking a question if you think the book is, you know, should be there or not. I want you also, I don't know if, you should have gone through all the training for the DOE on all these books, and I want you to remember, as they said, to err on the side of caution when these books, when we're talking about them. You don't want them to be read, and I will tell you, out of respect for you and all of you, we have not read the books, out of respect for our community. Because anytime I do bring them up, you're right, people don't like them. They're very nasty, saying very bad words and talking to kids about sex. I just find, I cannot believe what these people are allowed to get up here and lie about. There's no book banning, it's asking questions. So, please err on the side of caution when you're deciding about Sold. I realize it's not one of the worst, it is just one of the ones. It is going all around the country. This book has been removed in many, many counties in Florida. Many states have removed this book. Here are the top 10 banned. And I gave you a big list of these. Remember last summer? A lot of these, you weed it out because they're so bad. I didn't even have to go through this disgrace of being run through the mud by these Democrats and the liberals have literally dragged me through the mud on just asking questions. But anyway, some of these books were so bad, you already removed them, that's great. Sold, like I said, I don't think it's one of the worst. I'm just asking a question. I'm going the full way of all the challenge so parents know how to do it. That's why I'm here. The committees, I have been to every single one. They're totally biased, totally, totally biased. People already have their minds made up. It's a lot of these people, they don't even want to hear what we have to say, but they can keep fighting, and I will keep fighting too. So, we'll see you later, and thank you all. I know it's been a very long day. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kathy Barnett. Again, she's on the book challenge, but also on 1802, I imagine, the appeal complaint? Or is it on Flagler Ed Foundation? I'm not sure which. But go ahead.
Hi, everyone, how are you? I left my speech at home, so I'm so sorry. Been running around. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for you being here tonight, and thank you for everybody for serving because me, just as a parent and going through the book review process, it's been total uncomfortableness. I'm just a parent, and my name has been posted in the paper and all this other stuff, and that is one of the reasons why I've decided that I did not want to join the district book club because I don't want to be part of the Sunshine Law rules, and I don't want to be harassed, I don't want my kid harassed. I'm sure you all deal with that on a daily basis because we all read the same media, the same stuff online. So, thank you all for standing up, and I wanted to say that positively to all of you, for coming every day and dealing with all the stuff that you have to deal with. But I also wanted to say that the process, we need to figure out a process with these books. The way that we currently have it, and I'm so grateful for Ms. Moore for putting this process into place and all the work that she has done to do it. But this process takes so long, and like I said, we go through the whole process and we're just sitting there. We can't say anything. I mean, I volunteer, I was on PTO, I've been on SAC. I wasn't chosen for any of the local book reviews, but I was able to do the training for the district, and after being told specifically that the Sunshine Laws would be applied to me, I decided not to go forward. So, basically, all I can do is come up here and talk to each one of you. And I'm shaking. Anyways, so I wanted to share that, that we need to streamline it. I don't know, I don't know what the law says about you guys having to get through all these books in a certain period of time, but this process is very tedious, and our teachers are already overworked and everybody, we don't, I don't know. It seems very, the process doesn't seem like it's gonna be effective in the long run. And the people on the committees, it just seems like it's an adult book club. And the people on the committees, it just seems like it's an adult book club. It doesn't seem like to be addressing all the ugliness of the books. I mean, all I hear is educational value and literary value, and it's written so well, but is it really addressing the substance of the books? I don't know. I don't know if I'm, am I allowed to talk about transparency and violence in the schools, or should I do that later? I think I'm out of time, anyway. All right, I'll bring it up again. Okay, so I just wanted to say thank you very much, and thank you.
Next speaker is Sharon DeMers, and again, she's speaking on the book committee and violence in school.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sharon DeMers, and I'm a taxpayer in Flagler County, and I have grandchildren in Flagler School District, so that is my interest. I examined the, I've talked to so many people about, including school board members, about the book review system, and I understand it doesn't come to the school board until after the superintendent has approved the books and the public contacts the school board with their satisfaction or dissatisfaction about certain books. And I'm grateful to have had those communications. Now, when I looked at the book review committee, I analyzed the affiliations, the party affiliations, the registered voter affiliations of the members on the book committee. And I was shocked that every time I looked at a vote, it was always unanimous to keep the books. So when I looked at the, and reviewed the registrations of the people on the book committee, there are 10 Democrats, two independents, and one Republican. That does not reflect our community. If the book committee reflected our community, there should be 45% Republicans, which would be seven, four Democrats, 26%, and four independents, which is also 26% on the committee. The committee should also be comprised of 30% retirees, which is what our numbers are. There are three people on there in that age group, and there are 75, 80, and 79. I'm not sure that that's the right demographic to be reviewing books for schools, even though these people are highly educated, and they all happen to be in the state retirement system for education and pensions. That said, I feel that the books are objectionable. I feel that the language in them is obscene, and that is what I believe the statute is in the school district, is you should not have obscene language in your books in the schools. And for that reason, I wish that you would reconsider those books and reformulate your committee and go forward again. As for Ms. Middlestat, I'd like to take care of that in the next agenda item, where we talk about the superintendent. Agenda item 19? No?
That's, there is no action.
Oh, okay. All right, so real quick, these problems in school with the bullying and the violence existed in 2016 when I ran for school board. They have stayed the same. There has been no change. The teachers expressed concern to me about being beaten, bitten, and arm-broken during the school year by ESE students, and this situation has not changed one bit. I believe Kathy Middlestat has failed our school district on this matter, and I believe that a change needs to be made. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Chanel Channing. Ms. Channing is speaking on the book Sold.
Thank you. Well, as you know, Einstein says, definition of insanity is doing the same thing, anticipating different results. So let's look at this very differently. And that is, as you know, this became a political hot potato, and that's why we're approaching it through committees. This is historically been, the books have been vetted by your media staff as they purchase the books. These books slipped through, these pornographic books slipped through because they were donated. Common sense would tell you, well then, let's have our media staff then look at these books and vet them. But because it was so political, the Department of Education said, well, maybe we better please everybody and have committees. Well, it's not pleasing everybody, as you can see, and it's probably because the committees are not professionals, they're not trained like your media staff has been. So now here you are, now you're having to look at this book Sold, and Sold first was challenged last summer, and then it went to a committee in October, and now the district committee this early March, and now here we are. And so you can imagine doing that times 22. That's taken all that administration, all that money going through this process. I recommend that you, as a school board, get with your media staff, go through these books, get it done. Thank you.
The final speaker is Perry Matrano, and he once again is speaking on the 1601
Good evening, Board. My name is Perry Matrano, and I am a resident here, a taxpayer. I'm also the chairman of the Flagler County Republican Executive Committee and the conservative values of our great governor. And I have to say, we got a good board, we do. I know Ms. Conklin a very, very long time. My son has graduated through kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade, and now onto college, and he has gotten a great education from the hard work that everyone has done here. So I will say, someone like Will Furry, who was a great conservative and is pushing the agenda of good, these folks here who are reviewing the book, who are speaking about the books, whatever they are, I haven't read any of the books, I'm not gonna lie, but in my days of reading books, they're over focused, so I'm gonna stick to that comment. But just understand that they have a right to speak. They have a right to be heard. Mr. Shapiro here came up and basically violated item number four, the profanity, to make loud noises, abusive, tell the commenters, you shouldn't do that, you should let people speak. Don't make fun of people. That's not what, that's why I'm up here. I actually was okay just listening, but then it bothered me that someone would say more about someone else speaking. That's not what this is about. I'm happy that you all are reviewing these books, I'm happy that you're able to maybe try to find some middle ground, but at the end of the day, no matter what, these folks that come up here from the Liberty Group are here for the benefit of our children and nothing more. So they shouldn't be accused and called names, I mean, that's childish, quite frankly, that's sixth-grade stuff, but we're not. So I thank you, I'm very proud of this organization. My son is grown as a result of you all, and I thank you once again.
You want to speak?
There's one more speaker.
Ms. Wilbre.
And it's on books. She was trying to sign in. Trying to figure that one out back there.
I wasn't gonna speak. Good evening, Mrs. Middlestat, Chair and Board. I wasn't gonna speak, but I just, one thing came to mind, and I think you need to be thinking about that when you vote. There's gonna be a report card of this board sent to the governor's office, because part of the bill about these books was that a list was to go to his office about the books that were removed or not removed from this district that were challenged. So that is a report card. And we know that he looks at those report cards, because luckily, when there was a threat of monies being taken from school districts that actually went against the no-mask mandate order, luckily, we weren't one of the 12. We could have been, but we weren't. So it's gonna be really embarrassing for Flagler Schools if the report card includes books that remained in our libraries but were withdrawn from other places. So all that's gonna be looked at, and it's your report card as a board, and I guarantee they'll be looking at each one of your votes.
No comments, please?
And at that, Chair Masaro, that is the conclusion of your public comments for the first part of our meeting.
Okay, they're ready for the video.
Yes, thank you. Chair Masaro, at this time, the Flagler Schools Annual Report, it has not been provided in a number of years. I've asked our board if I could bring this back forward to you, and so this evening we have that by way of a video to share with you everything that has been upheld this school year regarding all the efforts from the school district staff, school administrators, and teachers throughout our building and our organizational support. So at this time, if you could play that video.
I want to welcome you to the 2022-23 Flagler Schools Annual Report. My name is Kathy Middlestat, and I am honored to serve as the superintendent for Flagler Schools. In this presentation, I will focus on what we have accomplished this past year, focusing on our strategic plan and how this is setting our students up for success for the future.
It is my belief that if everyone in our district has the mindset to simply elevate excellence every day, our students and our schools will be successful. This is especially true as new legislation replaces the grade level Florida Standards Assessments, FSA, with Coordinated Screening and Progress Monitoring System, also called the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking, or FAST. Of course, we must start with our mission statement, which is, Flagler Schools ensures educational success through high expectations and innovative thinking in a safe learning environment to empower students to reach their full potential as responsible, ethical, and productive citizens in a diverse and changing world.
When we created our strategic plan two years ago, we wanted to ensure it was based on a cornerstone that is our mission. We entered the 22-23 school year with a few changes.
First, we shifted our sixth grades back to our middle schools, and we also rezoned a portion of Palm Coast, which moved students to Indian Trails and Matanzas High School. These moves were made to help us prepare for anticipated population growth in the future. Our student population has increased by nearly 3% from last year. We are on track to welcome over 14,000 students into our schools next year. We started the expansion process at Matanzas High School, which is our largest capital outlay project since the building boom in the early 2000s. And as outlined in our five-year capital plan, we anticipate planning a new high school to begin in the next couple of years.
Six goals were established in our strategic plan, each led by a member of our leadership team.
Goal one is academics. Increase academic achievement in core subject areas for students as identified through state and progress monitoring assessments.
Metrics for this goal are as follows. Number one, increase the percentage of students who are on grade level in core subject areas as measured by state assessments and the progress monitoring in ELA, or English Language Arts. And, number two, increase the percentage of students who are on grade level in core subjects as measured by state assessments and progress monitoring in math. This data is based on final assessments our students take at the end of the school year. The Florida Department of Education is expected to release the results this summer.
Goal two is educational equity. Flagler Schools will increase access for all students to a high-quality educational experience.
For the second goal, we look to, number one, reduce gaps in student achievement on state assessments between overall achievement and high-priority subgroups. Number two, increase the percentage of students showing progress in English language proficiency. And number three, increase the percentage of unique students enrolled in Level III courses such as International Baccalaureate, our ACE Cambridge Program, Advanced Placement, Dual Enrollment, Honors, and Adult Career Tech. As with the previous goal, the Department of Education will release the results this summer.
Our goal three is social and emotional well-being. Flagler Schools will provide a structured framework for improving social-emotional well-being throughout the school community and district.
This goal is measured by the following metrics. Number one, increase the percent of school staff members who are trained in youth mental health first aid. Number two, mitigate chronic absenteeism to pre-pandemic levels for students who have accrued 21 days or more of unexcused absences from school. And number three, improve our connectivity rate for social work referrals to verify that families are linked to appropriate resources within 72 hours of that need. At this point in the school year, we have achieved or exceeded all targets for these three metrics.
Goal four concerns talent. Flagler Schools will align recruitment, opportunity, retention efforts so that new talent and existing staff are supported throughout all phases of the employee lifecycle. The employee lifecycle includes attraction, recruitment, onboarding, development, retention, and offboarding.
Our metrics for this fourth goal are, number one, reduce the percentage of vacant instructional positions after the first two weeks of school. Number two, reduce the percentage of non-instructional positions after the first two weeks of school. Flagler Schools has been challenged by an evolving workforce following the pandemic. This has made filling vacant positions within the first two weeks of school very difficult, and as a result, we did not meet these target goals. We have held a number of job fairs throughout the school year, seeking additional educational professionals as well as non-instructional support staff. We will continue our outreach into the spring and over the summer months as we prepare for the new school year.
Goal number five revolves around operational efficiency, and we want to ensure our operational efficiency aligns our resources with the strategic priority.
Within this goal, we look at, number one, plant and custodial services will increase the routine work order productivity and completion rate. Number two, food and nutrition services will increase participation in our school lunch program. Number three, transportation will increase on-time arrivals and decrease roadside breakdowns. And number four, ensure continuity of operations in the event of unforeseen emergency by maintaining a general fund balance minimum of 8%. This is a wide-ranging goal, which involves several different departments. We exceeded our targets in all but our food and nutrition services area. The initial metrics were set using pre-pandemic data and experience. Since then, we've already seen an increase during this school year, and we are currently serving over 6,000 students daily.
Finally, goal six is communication. Increase the awareness of Flagler Schools within the Flagler County community through a multi-layer process, as well as clarify the communication among internal stakeholders.
The metrics for this goal are, number one, increase social media across Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Number two, increase the positive perceptions of district communications. District staff has worked with our building and department leaders to help them better manage their messaging and increase engagement among our social media channels. This year, we are establishing baseline data at each school in terms of unique views of their social media accounts, as well as their website visits.
In addition to our strategic plan, Flagler Schools recently completed our accreditation process with Cognia, formerly known as Advanced Ed. This process took a look at our entire organization from policies to learning conditions and cultural context. The goal was to determine how well all parts of Flagler Schools operate together so we can meet the needs of every student. Although our score was above average, this is a continuous process and serves to guide us to improve our performance standards. The summary of the findings will go a long way in helping us target areas for next year as we define our metrics to support each of the goals in our strategic plan.
We routinely recognize employees going above and beyond, and for the first time this year, we recognized our newest educators with our Rookie of the Year awards during our annual celebration. Finally, I cannot thank our entire Flagler County community enough for the continued support of our students. Voters overwhelmingly supported the renewal of our half-cent sales tax this past November. This will provide another decade of financial support staying right here in Flagler County. With this renewal now passed, we are establishing a citizens oversight committee. This will ensure transparency and accountability when it comes to using these funds.
Ryan Deesing, Chief of Technology and Innovation, shepherded our half-cent sales tax renewal this past fall. I've asked him to speak on the impact these funds will have on safety, security, and the future of Flagler Schools.
With the community's continued support of the half-cent sales tax, we're able to continue to improve safety and security of all of our students and staff. One of these improvements is our use of digital access control and security systems to increase our ability to secure our campuses. This will allow us to better monitor for open or prop doors and remotely lock them in real time when needed. Staff will even receive alerts that a perimeter door has been opened. Another is outfitting school buses with additional lights, cameras, and predictive analytics to monitor surrounding traffic and assess any dangers to students. We will also be making enhancements to our school campuses to ensure first responders and district staff have access to the county's 800 megahertz public safety communication system. This will ensure clear, direct, and This will ensure clear, direct, and seamless communication for everyone responding to any type of safety issue on any of our campuses.
Over this summer and into the early part of the school year, school leadership teams, administrators, and district staff have worked diligently to develop our school-wide improvement plans. The teams identified areas at each school that are strengths and areas that may need additional supports. Strategies to maintain those strengths or increase the amount of support in those areas were developed and implemented throughout the school year. We are now beginning to see the outcome of this process and to ensure that all of our students are successful and productive members of our society.
The state of Flagler Schools is strong and only growing stronger, thanks to the continued collaboration among our students, teachers, administrators, staff, parents, community partners, and local leaders. We have thoughtfully created opportunities for each voice to be heard as we are all invested to elevating Flagler Schools to be among the top-performing in the state. Our guiding principles lead us forward: children first, trust and respect for all, empower others, teamwork, excellence, quality, and consistency, commit to individual needs, and get to yes.
We continue to elevate excellence all across Flagler Schools.
Thank you for the opportunity on the spotlight this evening to share the Flagler Schools Annual Report. And at this time, Board Chair, that brings us back to, I think, your consent items.
Before I get to consent items, we do have an additional public comment that was...
Yes. Board, thank you, Chair, for indulging. You had one more community member who wanted to speak on an agenda item that is before you this evening. It is Carol Gunthorpe, and she is speaking regarding this book challenge that you will be discussing.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Basically, I wanted to focus on the banning of books. While I applaud parents who want to be involved with their children's choices of reading literature, and I believe that is their right, I also believe it is the right of other people who may not agree to have books that they want their children to read. Also, I take issue with the fact that this has become a political issue and that the people who already have reviewed these books are of a certain political party. That does them a disservice because it basically says that they cannot think as individuals. Additionally, I find the thought of a report card being embarrassing absolutely ludicrous. What we are here, and we are all concerned about all the children in Flagler County, is that we want to do what is morally right. We set the pace. Our children look to us to make correct decisions that will help them and guide them in the future. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go now to consent items. Now, this next section will go relatively quickly. Please understand that all of these items have already been workshopped. We have addressed them. It's just tonight that we approve them by vote, so understand that. All right, we're going to look at seven resources and supports for consent. Is there any questions? Do we have a motion for that? I'd like to take this by section tonight.
I'll motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Hunt, and I need a second.
Second.
Ms. Chong. We have a motion by Ms. Hunt and a second by Ms. Chong. Is there any conversation?
Again, Madam Chair, just let the record reflect. I'll be abstaining from 7.02, but voting on the rest.
Okay, we got that. All right, I'll call the question then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, we're going to go on now to Section 9, which is Academic Services. I need a motion for consent. Move approval. Ms. Chong and a second.
Oh, second.
Mr. Furry. Got it. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Mr. Furry. All those, is there any conversation? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll go to consent, Operational Services. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Furry.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Chong. Any questions? Okay, then we'll go, call the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Again, it passes unanimously. All right, we have consent for our Human Resource Section, 11.01. I need a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, Dr. Conklin, a second.
Second.
Fury. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Again, this passes unanimously. All right, now we're going to move on to the action items. We are on 15.01. Request Board approval for purchase of a StarLab inflatable portable planetarium. Presenters are Ms. Alvez and Ms. Teresa Phillips. I need a motion.
Move approval.
Dr. Conklin, a second.
Second.
Ms. Chong. Any conversation? We want an invite.
Madam Chair, if I may...
Yes, we have a question, Ms. Hunt.
Well, not really a question as much as a comment. At the last board meeting, I hesitated on this because I said I wanted us to be prioritizing funds, whether it's from the half-penny sales bucket or whatever it is. I want us to prioritize funds for safety. And my concern was that, you know, while this is amazing, is this more important than maybe some safety enhancements like an outside consultant coming in again, for instance, to harden our schools? And so I want to put it out there that I still want to continue that conversation. But in thinking about this opportunity and the engagement that it'll provide students, which really, at the end of the day, actually does play into safety and security, because if our students are engaged and loving education, there's a lot of reward in that. And so, anyway, I just want, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to share. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, so we have a motion. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. We have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Chong. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Seeing none, it passes.
Thank you.
All right, we're going on to 16.01. Appeal of Challenge Media Material. The book title is sold by author Patricia McCormick. I need a motion.
Move approval to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, Ms. Conklin, I need a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. And Ms. Hunt, it is now open for discussion.
Are we discussing it or voting on it?
We're discussing. It's discussing.
I've got a lot of thoughts always on everything, so if you'll...
Go ahead, Ms. Hunt.
You'll allow me.
You have it.
So Jennifer, who I think is still here, asked for us to share whether we read the book or not. And so I will let you know, I did ask Attorney Gavin to brief me. I don't, I choose to not read certain books. I choose not to watch certain movies. I am a very deeply, I feel things very deeply. And so for my own mental health, at 45 years old, I've learned that there are things that I do and don't want to hear, read, see. And so I was briefed. I feel very well-prepared to vote on this. With that being said, I don't know what we're able to decide as a board or not on this, but sharing my personal story, if nothing else with titles like this, I wish that there was a way, whether it's a label at the front or something of different books, to at least give, much like we see with movies or TV shows, to give some kind of, I don't want to call it a warning, but to give some type of a heads-up for our students to say what type of content. A lot of times, we use the word triggers. I can tell you things that I read as a teenager I still vividly remember today, and I would say those things didn't help me grow, if anything, they did, you know, they did disturb me. Now, that's me. That's, that's who I am. Somebody else could read the things that I've read, and they grow from it. So I would never want to project who I am as a person and what my unique needs are, development needs are, onto somebody else. But I would ask if there is a way for us as a board, whether that's policy or whatnot, to look at a system where we are, for the benefit of our students, letting them know maybe some of the topics that are in these books. And then also, as part of that label, let them know where they can go if they want to discuss those topics. So that is, that is really what I wanted to share tonight. Thank you for allowing me.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? Mr. Furry?
Yes, I'd like to. So for the record, I did read the book. I have it here. And I will say, it's not a book that I would normally choose to read, but in order to make an informed decision tonight, I did read it. And one of the speakers tonight said that, you know, we need to look at things in context. And in fact, here is some context. You know, there are books that are written for adults, and there's books that are written for children. There's movies that are made for adults, and there's movies that are made for children. This book is very explicit. It deals with child rape and torturing of minor children and their genitalia. This is not a way to deliver the message. It's not what you say, it's how you say it. I can recall that at one time at a church service, we had a victim of human trafficking come and share her story. And she was able to deliver that in a church setting without using any vulgarity or sexuality. And I can tell you, there wasn't a dry eye in that church that day. And we got the message of the atrocities of human trafficking. So this book, actually, I thought was very well-written, but for adults, not for children. That's what I have to say about that.
Anybody else make a comment?
I've read the book also, and I just, I have to go back to Florida statutes and laws and remember that these are minors, like Will said. We have to consider what's for adults and what's for children. And, you know, as Statute 847.012 says, we cannot provide materials that include sexual excitement, conduct, sexual conduct, and that is harmful to minors. And so, yeah.
Ms. Conklin, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do. I will, I read the book. I actually thought it was probably one of the most powerful stories I've really honestly ever read. It's about a 13-year-old girl. I think it's for a high school audience, for sure. But it's written by a researcher who traveled all over India and Pakistan. I'm sorry, India and Nepal. I did not actually find it to be, I didn't think it was as graphic, I guess, as some folks might. I thought that the author did a beautiful job in conveying what was happening. It was very obvious what was happening. But I don't feel like there was a tremendous gross, perverted description of what was, what was happening. It was horrible what was happening. But if you're, if you're looking at 847, and it's saying any picture or visual representation, it's not a picture and it's not a visual representation. If you're looking at any book, any book, pamphlet, magazine, or printed matter that contains explicit and detailed verbal descriptions, I did not find this to have explicit. It was very much implied. And yes, you knew what was happening. But the power of the story for a high school student, I think, was more than grade-appropriate. And it was really based, if you will, on the tremendous amount of research that went into the novel. Sharing about 12,000 Nepali girls who are sold by their families intentionally or unintentionally into, you know, the slave trade. Human trafficking is part of Florida's standards. This book was on the original list from DOE. It was, it was, this was an approved book to share the story and the context of human trafficking. So I think that we have a policy in place that if parents find this award-winning book offensive, they can opt their children out of it. I'm not opposed to looking at some kind of a warning label for students who truly, because I understand that piece of it, right? Being triggered by something, not knowing exactly what you're going to read, for those who may have experienced trauma in their lives, not wanting to, to read something like that. However, stories like this should be told. Young people should know that this actually exists. I'm talking about high-school-age students. I'm not talking about elementary or middle-school students. But this is, Florida is the third-leading in the, in the nation in sex trafficking. We are mandated by state statute to teach about sex trafficking. This is a piece of realistic fiction. So just to, just to, Madam Chair, if I may, some of the comments around the committees. And if Ms. Moore, is she still here? LaShaka, if you, if I could ask LaShaka a few questions. There's been some dialogue, and first, let me say this, because I've read all of the reports that everybody has completed and filled out, and the amount of time that has been spent on this, and this is just the first. I know we're going to go through this process. But I want to make sure that the public understands, and if they haven't been communicated with, that, that they will be communicated with. We've had over, how many people volunteer to participate in the committee process?
We've had over 80 members, parents and community members, sign up to be a part of the committee. We've had two district challenges. So individuals who were not on the, on Committee One or Committee Two were sent an email that stated that at this time, they have not been assigned a book to read because there were not any additional book challenges at the district level. So Book Committee One and Committee Two have both gone through the process, and then the other committees are, are waiting for any additional district-level challenges to occur.
Have any volunteers been told they cannot participate in the process?
No volunteers have been turned away. There are, have been comments around the makeup of the team, but we have taken anyone who is a parent or resident of Flagler County, they have been put into a group. I am not, I, many of these individuals, I do not know. We put them in groups by random selection. I did not do it. Another member of the team that is not affiliated with book committees did do the random selection. For us, it was auto-generated. We put the names into a system, and it put them all into different groups. So the makeup of the groups are not initiated by us. It is random selection.
Okay. And was there ever any conversation? It's not in statute. There's nothing that references any political party or makeup. Staff would not ever look into anything like that.
It has, it is only my responsibility to stand up a procedure that aligns with this board's policy, and that is what we have done. Board policy does not reference any affiliation of parties or, or any other... Board policy does not reference any affiliation of parties or any other demographic information other than they must be a parent or a resident of our community.
Okay. So the message to anybody outside of the 80 that has not participated or been notified to participate, the idea is they will be called to participate on a committee at some point in time?
Absolutely. So we had a cutoff date, and within that cutoff, we received 80 individuals. They have all been communicated with that they were either assigned a group, which was Group One or Two, or they are on a group, which is Three, Four, Five, or Six, but that group has not been assigned a book to read because there have not been additional district challenges.
Okay.
And these are all individuals who have, on the survey, indicated that they want to serve on the district-level committee. If there were individuals that wanted to serve on the school-level committee, we sent that information to the school-level committees for them to have an opportunity to serve there.
Okay. Understand. I think, for the most part, those were some of the... I just wanted to make sure that the community was clear on the process. And so, at the end of the day, again, if you haven't read this book, I think you should read the book. It is an amazing story of hope. And yes, while this young lady goes through some tragic, horrible events no one would ever want to see or have their own child go through, it is a story of how she comes out and survives on the other side of it. But it also brings a great awareness to sex trafficking. So for a high school audience, I would support keeping the book and support the schools' level committee recommendation, the district-level committee's recommendation, and the superintendent's recommendation.
I have some more comments.
Mr. Ferry?
Thank you. Superintendent Middlestat, you did review this book?
I did read the book and review the district committee.
Okay. I have a question. Would you allow... This is only in the high school right now?
Yes.
Okay. Would you allow for any of our teachers in the high school to read this in front of the classroom in its entirety aloud? Would that violate any school policy or state statute?
It would not violate any state statute. The context and the previewing by a teacher is critically important any time we use a media resource. So to do a dry read to any student in a class would be very inappropriate. No teacher would move forward and develop a lesson to that regard.
Well, that's your opinion. You can't say that no teacher would. I'm asking a very specific question. Would you allow, or would there be disciplinary action, if a teacher was to read this book to their class aloud in its entirety, with every passage, every word? Would it violate school policy?
No, it would not violate policy.
Okay. And would you support that and allow this to be read in its entirety? If a teacher decided to do that, would you be okay with that?
Again, I trust our teachers to ensure it aligns with the curriculum. It's part of some type of instructional purpose in which they're serving with the students that are assigned to their class.
Okay. So you would allow it?
Again, with our teachers and our expectations that we have built within our organization, it would be permissible, yes.
So you would support them if they were challenged on this?
If a teacher was challenged, we have a book-review process for that challenge to occur. That's part of our policy for XI. The process that we established this year encompassed all of those steps.
So there was another book that was banned, All Boys Are in Blue. Would you have allowed that to be read in the classroom in its entirety to the class?
I'm gonna have to call the question. We're not talking about any other books. We're talking about Sold tonight.
Okay. Well, then, I'll retract that. So here's the thing, is that we've got to remember, what we're talking about here is not banning a book. This book will still exist after this vote today. It'll be accessible to a child through a parent's decision to provide it to them. There's public libraries, there's online, there are even free ways to access this book. A parent deserves a reasonable expectation when they send their kid to school that they're going to have age-appropriate material in the school library. And that's what we're talking about. No matter how much we like this book, or one doesn't like it, it's about whether it's appropriate for children. And when you read these reviews from the district, you have... Even you, Ms. Conklin, said that you wouldn't want it for middle school, but it looks like just about everybody now wants this... They've lowered this down to be accessible in middle school. And here's some of the comments. Although I did find the material may violate Florida Statute 847, it's my opinion that the book contributes greater to the education of the student, and an exception should be made. So now, we should make exception to law. If it did violate law, I'm not going to get into that. I'm not an attorney. But then, this person goes on to approve the book and lowers the standards to bring it to middle school. And it goes on here.
May I respond to that? The middle school, any material that is in our high school that a middle-school student would gain access to only comes through parental choice and parental approval. So a middle-school student could not gain access to this book or any other book that is in our high school unless their parent approved that. That is a procedure that is in place. That is absent from the parental choice that we currently have in place for all of our schools.
Right. But just for the record, the reviewers want it in middle school. So just to put that out there.
No, I think that...
It says, right now, it's in high school.
The publisher's guide is Six through 12, but I think we're all saying...
But it says here, "Middle and high school only."
Okay. Is there any other comments from anybody else?
Madam Chair, if I may, just one last. So in speaking about the label at the front, that would be, to me, a short-term solution. A long-term solution, something that I'm really passionate about, and I've already spoken with Superintendent Middlestat and Ms. Moore about, is a partnership, a greater partnership with our public library. For those of you who haven't spoken, and it's been a while since I've spoken with her, but I believe it's Holly Albanese or Heidi?
Holly.
That's what I... Okay, thank you, Holly. She's brilliant and is doing so many wonderful things at our public library. She and I had the opportunity to speak for a while when I was first elected. And she shared with me, for instance, new technology like virtual bookshelves, right? Where the books are not necessarily... The hard copies are not necessarily in the space, but that our students would be able to slide through the titles. I'm not looking to discuss this tonight. I just wanted my fellow board members to know. Holly is passionate about equity of access. That's a term she uses a lot, and I think it's a beautiful term, equity of access. I want equity of access for our students. And is there an opportunity for Flagler schools to have a greater partnership with our public library, perhaps looking at utilizing our courier service in the future? I think that there... We have a lot of work to get done as a board, and this is our very first book challenge. And I would just love for us to explore, is there a place we can all meet in the middle so it doesn't become a power grab of, "Right now, the board might be split this way. In two years, it could be split another way." Is there a common-sense solution that works for most? Again, thinking about things like partnership. And I'll end with saying this. I'm very objective-focused. The objective here is not to necessarily get a hard copy of a book on the shelf. The objective is for our students to be reading, for our reading scores to go up, for them to read things that broaden their mind and make them more and more curious. So I just would love for us to look at the media center, our libraries, our media specialists, and just think about that program and that space moving into the future. You know, what could it be? That's something that I would challenge Superintendent Middlestat to do, just because something has been this way for decades, these school libraries. I would say they've not changed all that much since I was a student, and really, is it time for us to think creatively about this idea of equity of access and reading? So, thank you.
Are we done there?
Everybody done? I know we all probably have our minds made up, but I would just ask everybody to think about how you would feel if I started reading some excerpts right now. I'm not going to today. We'll move on. But, you know, it's something to think about.
All right. Now, it's my turn. I've been listening. I don't know. Student board members, would either of you familiar with this book that would like to speak to the subject?
I personally have not read the book, but I do plan on reading it because, from what Dr. Conklin has said, it seems like a book that I should definitely read. But on that topic of book banning, I just had a couple of comments, if that's okay.
Go right ahead.
Banning books is a slippery slope. Where does it end? Censorship is a way to control others. Haven't we learned this from history? Hitler banned books that threatened Nazi culture and books heeded and unsuitable to fall into the hands of youth. Now, what are we doing here today? We are banning books that some feel are unsuitable to fall into the hands of youth. We should use history to learn from our mistakes of the past, but today, we seem to be falling into old patterns. Democracy is based on the free flow of ideas. Some people may not agree with the ideologies and ideas presented in these books, but they have the option not to read them. Why are we taking these options away from the students just because some people don't agree? It should be the parent's responsibility to monitor what their children read and not the responsibility of our school board to ban them. Once we are done banning books, what will we ban next? And I just want to remind that I am a high school student, so these are the books in our libraries. Thank you so much.
Remara, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I do. As an avid reader myself throughout growing up in the school system, I feel like, and as my responsibility as school board representative for my school, it is a very popular topic that has become very talked about in my school. And I feel like a lot of students feel like there are alternative ways to go about a parent not wanting their child to read a certain book. That doesn't hinder the intellectual ability of another student. I feel like another thing that these books provide is, as Dr. Conklin said, is that they provide a student to learn more about empathy, which is something that I feel a lot of students need growth on, just not students, but us as a society as a whole. So I would like everyone to take that into consideration. Thank you.
I have listened to all my colleagues, and I am a person of process. I like to go through different processes to see where it's going to be. And yes, I have read the book from front to back, read the entire book. I am probably the only person up here that actually has a 15-year-old in my home. So it's very relevant, a female 15-year-old in my home. So it's relevant to me personally, as well as professionally. I read the book two days. It's not a hard read, but it's engaging. It made me think, and it made me understand even more about human trafficking, how horrible it is. It's awful. This young woman, though, through me, I believe, found courage because she was intelligent. She kept her education hidden. She was sold because she thought she was going to help her family. I can't tell you how many young women today find that same situation, except it's not in Nepal, and it's not in India. It's in Flagler County. It's in Florida. And I get irate and angry, and it happens every day. People get sucked in. Young girls get sucked in from somebody being nice to them, from somebody giving them gifts, somebody finding somebody who's vulnerable, vulnerable. I did not take offense to the book. I found it enlightening. I really did. Because it showed me more ways of how this is being used throughout the world, and it was researched. It was prepared. The sexual context was not pornographic. The writer was very explicit and careful at how it was presented. Did I like it? No, I didn't like it. Did I understand it? Absolutely. I got it. High school kids today, high school kids, not middle-school or elementary, they see far worse on television. They see far worse on social media. They see far worse in everything they do and the communications they have within one I don't disagree with looking at a lot of these books, and I'm not sure I will approve all of them or disapprove all of them. I don't know. But I'll take one at a time. And today, I'm looking at the book Sold. Do I think I should approve it for elementary and middle school? No. Is it a high school book? Absolutely. I think it's of value to high school students, so valuable that I walked out and handed that book to my 15-year-old and said, "You need to read this. You need to read this." Because when you go to college and you're out of my control, I want you to understand the power and the influence that people can place on you and take advantage of you. I want you to understand that. That's what I see in this book. And I think she... I know she will read it because she knows I meant it, because it's important. People have to understand things that are happening in this world aren't pleasant. We have to see these things for real, for what they are. I was thankful Ms. Wilbright sent me the guidelines from FDOE. I read the guidelines, especially, first of all, the pornographic. Pornography, and I've said this all along, by definition, is the depiction of erotic behavior, as in pictures or writing, intended to cause sexual excitement, arousal. That book does not do that. I can tell you that right now. There may be books that we're going to review down the future that does. I will take that to heart, too. But this book has value. It has literary value. It has educational value because it can teach some of our young ladies not to trust everybody, not to think that the world's rose-colored glasses, because it isn't, but to be more questionable, to ask questions, to find out, to make sure they know what they're doing, because it can protect them in the future. So that's my personal opinion, and I will vote accordingly because of those reasons. All right. Then, we have a motion on the floor. I don't know who made it.
Chair Conklin made the motion. However, Ms. Hunt seconded it. Ms. Hunt, you did state that you would... And I don't know if Dr. Conklin would take a friendly amendment because I think you wanted to tack on that there also be the ability to provide subject matter content for parents to have knowledge of before their child.
I don't even know that I stated "parents," even just the students. I was gonna actually bring that up under "new business." I didn't know if it was appropriate for us to include that with this conversation.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I just have a question with Ms. Conklin. Would you consider amending that motion to just be for high school students?
The motion is to accept the recommendation of the superintendent for the book Sold to be available to our high school students.
Okay. Do we need a second on that amendment?
Yes, you do.
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Hunt seconded. Okay. So then, we have a motion on the floor that the book would be approved for high school students only. Am I correct by Ms. Conklin, and it's started by Ms. Chong, and then amended by Ms. Conklin and Ms. Hunt? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
No.
So it passes. The book will stay on the shelves by 3-2 vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. All right. So we're done that. We're going on to Human Resource Service Action. Flagler County Education Foundation... Oops, we're in the wrong place. Am I?
Move Approval. I think we're on 1801.
I'm looking right now. Yes, Job Description, 1801. So that was Move Approval by Ms. Conklin, Dr. Conklin. I need a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Hunt? Although, let's see, any questions? This is Flagler County Education Foundation, Job Description. This is Flagler County Education Foundation job description. We had revisions done to catch it up to where it needs to be. Am I correct? Mr. Wulett? Okay. And, um, this is, there'll be no additional expenses involved. Well, we don't pay the expenses. The foundation does, correct? Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Dr. Conklin, a second by Ms. Hunt. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, there'll be none, so it passes unanimously. All right, now we're going on to 18.02. I would ask at this time that Mr. Peacock, please come to the center mic. And prior to discussion on this topic and presentations, I have to make this comment to all school board members. I ask that you pay attention because you will be individually requested to respond.
Wait, wait, wait. Before you do that, Chair, we're going to allow them to speak.
First?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So the, so the way that this is going to go, Board, is Mr. Peacock is given, if he needs 15 minutes, he will have 15 minutes. If he would like to reserve five minutes, he can let me know if he wants to reserve five minutes for closing statement. And then the superintendent will likewise have up to 15 minutes. And if she wants to reserve, um, she may do so as well for that final closing statement. And this 15 minutes is uninterrupted. So Board, if you do have questions based upon what you hear, please write those questions down because once you have a motion and a second, that is when discussion as well as questions will begin. So, um, at this time, Mr. Peacock, do you wish to reserve any time for closing statement?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir.
This is about 10 minutes. I've been prepared, so I wanted to make sure that I stayed very focused. So Superintendent Middlestat, Chair Masero, and School Board. I'd like to start by apologizing to those that have incurred additional work because of these circumstances. Sometimes to do the right thing, you have to admit when you're wrong. I never meant for this to get in the way of focusing on our students. I want to be careful to keep all this in perspective, especially in regards to what families are dealing with across the nation right now. Having said that, this is the process and this is the time that have been appointed. But I also want to be mindful to demonstrate to our scholars and professional educators, it's okay to advocate for yourselves, but you still need to follow good practices. You still need to do your best. You still need to do what's right and you need to treat others the way that you want to be treated. I will not be disrespectful. I will just simply present the information for your final decision to be made. For me, this has nothing to do with politics or future decisions regarding Flagler County schools. I just want to, as briefly as possible, explain the circumstances. Everything hinges around a vote that was taken for an insurance rebate. And I want to give you just a little background. As I said, this is not even 10 minutes worth, the entire thing. So on March 22nd, Brown and Brown made a presentation to the Insurance Committee regarding the reserve funds through a detailed financial report. Speaking specifically about the presentation of Brown and Brown, Ms. Hanson and, made, Ms. Hanson made a presentation and presented us with an insurance rebate program. That was the first day that we had heard anything regarding the insurance rebate. There was a concern mentioned at the onset regarding the time because it was a concern of the pay skip, the pay periods and when that would be done. And the union was attempting to try to have it done as soon as possible, coming out of COVID, to be able to reward their members. So, um, when the proposal is presented by either side, a discussion takes place for clarification, followed by a private caucus by both sides before proceeding with a tentative agreement. In this specific case, both teams met and unanimously agreed to move forward. I want to be, I just want to make sure I note, there were two teams involved in this. FCEA was represented as the chief negotiator, Mr. Bobby Bossardette. I was in the second chair. Ms. Patty Warmack, our CFO, Ms. Jewel Johnson, at the time, our Chief of Human Resources, Ms. LaShaka Moore, our current Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Marcus Sanfilippo, and I'll give him a plug, Principal of the Year, and also Ms. Kara Kronk. For FESPA, yours truly was the, uh, chief negotiator. Mr. Bossardette was in the second chair. Again, Ms. Warmack, Ms. Johnson, served on that committee. And it also, um, had the, the members of Dave Freeman, Angie Bush, Kenny Sebold, Dr. Rawls, and Mr. Ryan Andrews. After careful considerations and deliberations, the private caucus, the teams determined to recommend the well-prepared proposal and were in full agreement regarding the recommendation to the board for approval. Based on Brown and Brown's recommendation, there in fact existed a reserve amount that far exceeded the actuary recommendations. Actuary recommend, recommends a minimum of 33% of the actual cost for the plans to be maintained in the reserves at all times. At that time, the reserve balance was 4.6 million, which represented 47%. The recommended reserve balance was 3.4 million, which was 33%, making the reserve of 1.2 million over the suggested 33%. The cost for the rebate was approximately $800,000, leaving $420,000 over the recommended 33%. During the private caucus, so that a unified front is presented at the table, all the members of the bargaining team make sure that we discuss it, we carefully consider it, and when we walk into the room, back to the table, we are united in our decision that we've made. So in light of coming out of the COVID and teacher morale, the members of both teams supported the recommendation to the board. It was thought to be a win-win and it was a time-sensitive matter and the union was well aware we had not gone to executive session and would require board approval regardless of having the TA signed or not. It was very clearly understood. This had to be approved by the board. The reason we moved it forward was based on pay, based on timing and dates and when it would have to be pushed to. So we were trying to give the opportunity for the board to be able to, if it was approved by them, to get it put in place in a timely manner so that our teachers and our professionals could, could be compensated. Really quickly, March 22nd was a Brown and Brown presentation. April 20th was when the bargaining meeting, when the proposed, when the proposal was made. On April 25th, FESPA TA'd and executed the tentative agreement. On April 26th, it was TA'd by FCEA and executed the agreement. On April 28th, an executive session, information was presented in the board, to the board with the information we had, and the board did not approve the insurance rebate program. Once the board did not approve of the insurance loyalty rebate, I attempted to take as much responsibility as possible. Being an old coach, when the team's successful, it's all about the team. When we have issues or there's problems, the coach takes responsibility for what took place. So I attempted and let the union know, the board was not denying this out of hand. In the meeting notes, it clearly says, where I stated, "The board just wanted the opportunity to have more information," even though they had not been at the presentation by Brown and Brown to the Insurance Committee, they scheduled a meeting in due diligence so that Brown and Brown could come forward and give them that information. And I stressed this to the union. March 17th was not comfortable in the boardroom. There was, our unions came out in force and they had strong representation and they were asking that the board approve the insurance loyalty rebate. After that point, at May 25th, the executive session, the board approved the original insurance loyalty rebate that was recommended by the bargaining teams previously on April 28th. I know that the board made the decision because they wanted to compensate and provide funds for our teachers and all of our professionals, all of our support professionals. Once they had the information, then they moved forward with the actual proposal as it was. Typically, any matters involving finance, you go to your board for approval before you do a TA. Regardless, a TA is a tentative agreement. And Mr. Dietzen told us in that meeting, it's not unusual. Every time there's a TA, the board has final approval and it must be ratified by the union. So whether there was a TA, by the TA, our teams of those people that I mentioned earlier were recommending to the board that they approve this, um, this, this rebate. So on May 31st, the insurance loyalty rebate was signed by both parties and the MOU was finalized. And the, uh, the union was very happy. The teachers were very appreciative of what took place. This is when I get confused and it gets a little strange. On June 7th, in a board meeting, which is clearly documented, myself and Mr. Bossardette were asked to present our shifts and responsibilities for our positions as had been discussed for weeks. The changes were made based on the skillset of the individuals overseeing the departments and directors. The Coordinator of Behavior and Conduct Management, as well as the Director of FTC, were placed under my supervision for the 2022-2023 school year. The next day, I was called to Ms. Middlestat's office where I was informed that I would be sent to Wadsworth Elementary School, um, and that I would no longer be the Chief of Operations for Flagler County Schools. To sum it up briefly, there had not been any conversation regarding performance deficiencies. We did have a mid-year review. Ms. Middlestat did mention in, in that review that she suggested I empower the directors more by engaging them in projects that drive the district forward towards systemic change. There was no mention of performance deficiencies of any kind. As a, just for, just for the record, um, it is something that I've worked very hard and that is to be on the negotiating team. I spent time to educate myself through the Florida Public Labor Relations Association and have certification as a professional negotiator. I also attended the very first, um, training session that was put on basically by the School Board Association through FINN. It was endorsed. And, and through the Florida Educational, the Florida Educational Negotiator System, that was extensive training. It was over a period of, of 18 months and there was extensive training that was involved. I was very passionate. So I can just tell you, I was very disappointed in, in the, the move, uh, to, to not be in the, in that position anymore. I was told that, you know, you've been successful at Indian Trails, you've had, you know, good success, this will be a good move, this will be a good fit. And then on the 16th of June, there was an email from Ms. Middlestat that notified the union presidents that myself and Mr. Bossardette would no longer be involved in negotiations and outside representation would be hired. So in that preparation, I willingly served on the team while an assistant principal and then principal for several years before any compensation was even mentioned. A few years ago, it was determined that due to the amount of additional time and effort required from those participating on the bargaining teams, that we would receive a supplement. My agreements is primarily to defend my reputation that I believe has been tarnished. I remain passionate about bargaining. I do believe that there were some communications from Ms. Conklin to Superintendent Middlestat requesting my removal. During that time, not only do I feel I was demoted, it, when I came from Indian Trails Middle School as principal to the district office, it was seen as a promotion. When you go from the district office to a school, even though I am so extremely happy to be at Wadsworth, regardless of how all this came about, that's the best thing that has come out of, out of this entire thing. But I do believe that I was wrongfully terminated and demoted, um, even though the salary was made whole regarding, I continued my same salary, there is a negotiating supplement that was not paid. And I just have this to say, on 2017, there was actually the first year that anybody got paid for negotiations. There was no paperwork signed. 2018, 19, and 20, when I received $1,500, there was paperwork signed with nothing regarding fiscal year. It just was a document that was signed and then once it was signed, it was, um, the payments came every year in December, December 15th approximately. I believe, in closing, I was singled out as solely responsible for an uncomfortable meeting where the union banded together to show solidarity and request the board to approve the insurance rebate, even though the decision and recommendation were made by the entire team. There was further frustration to find out that Mr. Bossardette, who I had the utmost respect for, was returned to the FCEA bargaining team and allowed to continue to bargain for the remainder of that year. More than anything in this process, I want an opportunity to repair my reputation by these facts. I worked hard to build relationships and stay passionate about serving the students and their families, as well as the staff of Flagler County Schools. I, I mean this with no disrespect, but in the words of Forrest Gump, that's really all I have to say about this matter. I will not have any rebuttals for Superintendent Middlestat. This is the final words. I do acknowledge that the board has my appeal in their hands. It is their decision. But I want to say this in closing, regardless of the outcome, I want to move forward without any animosity or bitterness. There's only 1,440 minutes in every day. I'm choosing to focus on the scholars and professional educators at Wadsworth Elementary School and I only hope to continue to be afforded that opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peacock. At this time, it is, um, for Superintendent Middlestat. Ms. Middlestat, before you begin, do you need any time for, uh, closing? And if so, it's, it's your closing, so you would finish in 15 minutes.
Thank you. I, I do not need to reserve any time. Good evening, school board members. Mr. Peacock, thank you for bringing your grievance forward as part of School Board Policy 649. This is an opportunity for any employee in Flagler Schools who feels like they have a complaint that needs to be heard. As part of our School Board Policy 649, the first part of that policy is an informal discussion. And Mr. Peacock exercised that opportunity. He brought forward through an email notification to Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services, Ms. Moore, a review of being paid $7,500. That $7,500 is for collective bargaining regarding his chief negotiation, which would be 6,000 of that $7,500, and 1,500, which would be to serve on the team for the opposite bargaining unit. As you heard previously, Mr. Peacock served as a chief negotiator for the FESPA organization during the physical school year of 2021-22. On the other side of the house for our organizational chart, our Academic Services Assistant Superintendent at that time was Mr. Bossardette. And he also served as a chief negotiator, receiving the same supplement dollars amount of $6,000 for serving as the chief negotiator of FCA while also sitting on the bargaining team, earning a supplement of $1,500 for that same physical year and referenced. The first informal process was reviewed. Ms. Moore cited practice established by Flagler Schools that was communicated with our chief, Chief Finance Officer. To that response, Mr. Peacock exercises his right according to school board policy and brings it forward for what's called a Level One review. Now he attaches documentation, which he feels his grievance should be stood upon and for payment services of the time rendered during that physical year. The documentation for that review was presented back to Mr. Peacock and is part of our board documents collected in the evidence this evening that was presented. Again, the response was a denial of that $7,500 supplement because Flagler Schools has a practice of when they pay a supplement for anyone serving on the bargaining team. a practice of when they pay a supplement for anyone serving on the bargaining team. Once again, Mr. Peacock utilized the 649 and followed to the next step. The next step would be for a Level 2 review by myself. I dove deeper into our practices. I went back and it was a number of years prior to what Mr. Peacock mentioned, referenced to in 2017, when he started to receive a supplement, that there was an established practice for how supplements were paid in Flagler County. Again, a practice had been established. I reviewed how other administrators were paid who are also serving on those bargaining team units. Again, the supplements would be signed, they would be paid off for the physical year and the services that were rendered. I will tell you and board, I'm making a recommendation, that we change our practice and we tighten our procedure so we have clear transparency for any employee who's serving in a supplemental role. And by that, what I mean is the physical year that you are serving those services rendered, your supplement form will be signed by you, the in-person serving in that particular position, and we will have two things going forward that our CFO is reviewing with our payroll department. If it's for an annual supplement for that physical year of service, you could divide that into two payments. For the first semester, that employee could receive their payment in December. And then for the remaining semester of that same physical year, that employee could receive payment after that semester has concluded. It eliminates any type of misconceived notion that someone was doing services rendered and not being paid. So that recommendation I've already executed with our CFO to ensure that we are looking at our practices and where we do need to make our systems tighter and provide the appropriate documentation that is assigned in accordance with that employee doing the work, we're standing right and true by this organization with physical spending going forward. Simply put, the review of this process has been regarding the supplement paid and the services rendered during the physical year where Mr. Peacock served as our chief negotiator for our FESPA unit, $6,000, and on our bargaining team for the FCEA, the $1,500. That payment was paid to him in December of 2021. Board, I followed the policies, I followed our established practices that I inherited as a superintendent, and simply put, that's where we are with this grievance this evening. Thank you.
Now Chair Masaro, prior to accepting a motion and moving forward with a second on this matter, you do have a statement that you need to read with respect to the potential of any board member recusals.
Okay. Due to recent media publications regarding Mr. Peacock and interactions with current school board members, prior to hearing this grievance, I will ask each of you individually if you need to abstain from voting on this matter to assure a fair proceeding, free from potential bias or prejudice pertaining to both Principal Peacock and Superintendent Middlestat. In the event a board member believes their impartiality might reasonably be questioned, you should state on the record that it is this time you are recusing yourself from participating in this proceeding. Are we clear? Are you able to proceed in an unbiased manner regarding this action item? Ms. Chung?
Yes.
Mr. Furry?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Conklin?
Yes.
And myself is yes.
All right, at this time, then I do need a motion to be made and a second. You need to determine whether or not you want to accept the superintendent's recommendation of a finding that Mr. Peacock has been compensated in full for the $7,500 stipend for the 21-22 year, or whether or not payment is still due.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation that Mr. Peacock has been paid for services rendered for negotiations.
A second?
I'll second.
Ms. Chung? All right, we have a motion on the floor that Mr. Peacock has been paid through his supplement agreement in full. Any other conversation?
I just want to, you know, make sure we all understand and are clear. We've all been given documentation about this. In healthcare, we have a saying, if it's not documented, it didn't happen. So what we have to go by is the documentation that we have. And it is my understanding that for the fiscal year of '21 and '22, on November 22nd, '21, that the payment of $7,500 was paid to Mr. Peacock, correct?
I saw that documentation. Is that correct?
Just to clarify, there was a signed supplemental form, which you reviewed, which acknowledged that he would be receiving his payment for that. That payment was made in December.
And it stated fiscal year on it. Okay. All right, then I've got to call the question again. All those?
Chair Masaro, I'm so sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Hunt.
If I may, real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Hunt.
I just want to add to the conversation because I, again, I met with Attorney Gavin and she answered some questions for me. So Superintendent Middlestat, there may just be some follow-up questions for you. It's, I think that whether there's a demotion or what, that's kind of seems like that's a separate conversation, right? We're specifically talking about this $7,500. So that's going to be my question.
Correct.
That's going to be the point of my questions.
That's all it is.
So something that I was initially unclear about when reviewing these materials is, at one point, I thought that the chief negotiator piece was a part of the chief of operations role, right? And I had to learn that that is your decision as superintendent of if you're going to go outside for that or use someone from your bench, right? Or someone who you deem is fit for that. And so that was a piece of my learning and understanding on this, was that that is not tied to that job description.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is a supplemental position that stands separate and alone.
That could be other positions as well that you would use for that or outside.
That is correct. And just to provide context to that for the conversation purposes, prior to the two chiefs that served in that role, the previous chief was an interim chief as a result of our outside contracted services terminating their contract. And so what I have done is gone through the process of realizing in terms of Flagler Schools and the needs going forward, the outside counsel serving as a chief has been a very productive process previous to me coming in. And so that was part of the decision that I made to, at the time, Chair Tucker as decisions were made and people were reassigned.
And then my second piece that's kind of together with that, because Mr. Peacock was moved from a higher paying position to a, what I would assume would be a lower paying position, from chief of operations to principal.
Normally.
It's not different.
Normally would, but he remained home.
Well, thank you. And so that's actually, so it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that if someone, if we promote somebody, for lack of better words, and it's your, it is your decision of whether they would remain in that role or be to go to a different role, is it board, is it board policy that they then get to keep that, they're locked into that salary for one year?
So what was established is we had a salary study that was conducted by our FADS Association. And based on education now, in terms of trying to find high qualified, talented people to fulfill principalships and district level roles, we need to be competitive. And when we look at within an organization and we move some people around, there is latitude given to the superintendent to protect that salary if there is a reassignment of a position. And that's what I executed for both the individuals that were discussed earlier.
And so just to, I guess, bring this all together, again, initially, because I was thinking that that $7,500 was tied to the chief of operations role, in the spirit of that being protected for a year, my initial thought was that should be included in that protection. In learning that that is not tied to the salary of the chief of operations, Attorney Gavin, I appreciate you spending the time with me to help me understand that a little bit better. But I just, I wanted to just share with my fellow board members the process that I went through in really evaluating Mr. Peacock's grievance. So thank you for the time.
All right, then we have?
I have something to add as well.
Go ahead.
So when I look at this, you know, this was another book we had to read. It's really big. I think more pages than salt. So, but?
This was a better read, I just.
Yeah. So I, but I was able to narrow it down. There's a lot of things mentioned about the circumstances that surrounded his employment, Mr. Peacock's employment. But it really is coming down to this $7,500. And basically, all we can go off of is what has been provided to us. So, and I reviewed, we have payroll records here, we have his many contracts from other people that participated in bargaining. What I find odd is that I look at this form that is used and the form looks like it's for coaching, like for, to be a coach.
Very observant, sir. And that's another process going forward that needs to be clear and fully transparent. So when we look at our supplemental forms, a couple of years ago, the coaching line was added. But we need to do better as an organization. We need to spell out, is it a coaching supplement for a sports season? Is it a club sponsor supplement? Or is it a collective bargaining team supplement? So that is part of the practice that must be improved going forward.
Yeah, and so that in itself causes some doubt with this. And there's another problem I see here, is when I look at the payroll records, they start back in 2017, yet the only contracts that we have go, start in 2018, effective 8/6/2018. And then, but, so there is no, where is the contract or this same form or some other form for the bargaining of 2017?
Great question, sir. And so henceforward, when I came on board, we now have employee contracts. They were not in place prior to my arrival. So once again, as we find practices that must be tightened for the employees' sake of the work they're doing, we have to stand up those systems and make sure they are systematic so these concerns don't come forward any further and rise to the level of now you're having to review it as a board member.
Right, and 100% agree with that. But what the problem is here is in the claim, Principal Peacock claims that he was originally paid in the arrears. That was part of his argument in here. So when I look at the payroll records, I see a payment of 12/15/17 with no contract. He claims he was paid in arrears, right? And as we go forward, every single contract that he signed has a effective date, but has no reference to fiscal year until it comes to the 2021-2022. This one is the only one that says fiscal year. So there's two sides I look at this. I say, okay, well, do we, do we just go with the last contract signed? I mean, it says fiscal year, right? That's, that should make sense. But then he makes an argument. He says, no, but from the beginning, I was paid in the arrears. And we're missing documentation that would refute his claim because we have no starting point to say what the 2017, if that was a payment for the arrears or not. So that's my concern with here. I believe that the district has done a lot of work to try and make a case here with other contracts that are trying to set precedence. But if we're looking at what we have in front of us, you have to consider that, is that we have an incomplete view of this here, to refute the claim of the arrears.
Dr. Conklin?
I would respectfully disagree. It is, first of all, in education, everyone knows the fiscal year, fiscal year starts in July 1 and goes to June 30. There's no one in education that is being paid that doesn't know that. The request is specifically signed and it says 21-22 fiscal year. It's very, very clear.
For that one, but what, but his claim, going back to his claim.
Well, that was a previous superintendent. And that's not how the budget works. The budget is one.
I understand how the budget works. That's not the case here, is that you have documentation here, you have a conflict. Because how come then every year from, okay, I see here from 2018, it just says effective date, 8/6/2018, okay? It does not say fiscal year on here.
But that's a school year.
Does not say fiscal year again. Same form, exact same form, does not say fiscal year again. And then we come to this one here and 21 and 22 is the only one that says fiscal year.
Because I think what you're seeing is you're seeing the superintendent tighten what these forms are doing, which is what she's just said, right? When a document is signed, the supplement is signed in August of a school year, it is the intention that it is for a school year.
Right.
Our coach, everybody who signs it, the expectation would be it is for a school year, not half the school year and then another half of the school year.
No one relies on expectation when it comes to their pay. So all I'm saying is, there's room for doubt here because his employment contract does say fiscal year. We have a history of those, several others, but we have a document, we have a payment here in 2017 that we have no documentation that, to how that applied, right? We're making an assumption from that because we don't have paperwork, right? He claims that that was a payment in the arrears from there. And then if every other one said fiscal year afterwards, then I would say, okay, well then there's precedent. But I've got, I've got here one, two, and then not until the, not until the third one, finally it says fiscal year. So I'm just saying, if we're talking about his claim, his claim is that he, his claim is that he deserves this in the arrears. We can't discount the fact that we're missing information here.
But we're, but we're not. But we're not, is what I'm trying to say.
Madam Chair, may I share something?
One, just one quick question.
Absolutely, please.
Superintendent Middlestat, when Mr. Peacock was a principal, was he the chief lead negotiator?
Not to my knowledge.
Right, he was not. When he came to the district, what year did he come to the district as assistant superintendent?
21-22 school year. He served as chief of operations.
Which is why you are looking at the document you have in front of you. His supplement is signed for fiscal year 21-22 because he was the chief negotiator at that time as the assistant superintendent. The only thing that's missing, I will agree with you, Mr. Fury.
I'm sorry, I don't, didn't mean to cut you off, but I now see what you're saying. Because he was, before it was only FCEA.
Correct.
And now he was added the FESPA.
As the chief.
Chief. Okay, so there we go. That gives me clarification on that and thank you for that.
Ms. Hunt, did you have one other thing?
That was actually what I, that was also a part of my learning process is I was a little confused, again, in thinking that this was an ongoing part of Mr. Peacock's job. And so again, Attorney Gavin explained to me, again, thank you, that the 1,500 was for one capacity and that the 6,000 was for this new capacity. So if we can see that that, at least 6,000 was paid, right? Then, so I mean, we can maybe disagree or, you know, look at the 1,500 component based on maybe not having the best records. But if we can show that at least that 6,000 was paid, that would be evidence, if you will, that this new role of chief operations was honored for the service performed. Am I, am I missing anything?
No. But I'm going to call the question at this point. We have a motion and it was by Dr. Conklin, a second by Ms. Hunt, I believe, correct? That we support the superintendent's recommendation that Mr. Peacock has already been paid his supplement of $7,500. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
And just for clarification, it was Dr. Conklin and it was Ms. Chung that seconded the motion.
Oh, okay. I had, gave me my own writing, I thought it was Ms. Hunt. All right, we're going on then to, we have one more item business and that is on 20.01, which was added earlier. And that is to revise our board liaison. which was added earlier, and that is to revise our board liaison situation at Wadsworth Elementary School. Ms. Hunt has requested to be replaced and perhaps make a switch. Is there any other conversation, anything else you'd like to say?
Well, I just want to share for the benefit, I guess, of the public and for my fellow board members, Wadsworth is a tremendous school, and I've really been honored to serve thus far as the liaison, unfortunately, due to certain narratives within the media, and I'm not even going to go into, to that piece. But I, I believe it is Wadsworth's best interest for me to, to no longer serve as the liaison of that school. So, I appreciate my fellow board members for honoring that request of mine.
And when do they meet?
Well, I will tell you, when I first started, I sent an email both to Mr. Peacock and Mr. Lee and asked what cadence they wanted for us to meet. And Mr. Peacock, I think, preferred a weekly or a bi-weekly schedule. I'd have to look at my calendar.
It just needs to be a SAC meeting.
Oh, okay.
When does, that's what this is for.
Okay, I can't tell you that date right offhand.
Mr. Tinscher's in the office. Do you know when, when do you normally have your SAC meetings? Okay, so it's Wednesdays at 5:00 PM. What's tomorrow's Wednesday, the second Wednesday, first Wednesday? What is tomorrow's Wednesday? Fourth Wednesday? Okay, so it's the... Okay, so everybody knows what the possibility is. All right, so we need a liaison for Wadsworth Elementary School. I don't know, I will gladly do it. I will replace you.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate it. And as mentioned, you know, the offer is there that if...
Yes, you may get a phone call from time to time to fill in.
Yeah, please, thank you.
All right, so I will be the Wadsworth Elementary School liaison.
I need a motion and a second to just update our school board liaison list where we'll show that Chair Massaro will now serve as the liaison for Wadsworth Elementary School.
Motion to update our liaison.
Yes, a second. Okay, so we have, we have a motion by Mr. Furry and a second by Ms. Chung. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go then to any old business. Don't think we have any, right? We'll go on to new business. All right, we're going to take on our second public comment.
Oh, you're so, you're so fast sometimes.
Well, trying, trying to be.
No, you're amazing. I just want to, no.
Oh, I was hungry.
And speak, because of how late it is, we certainly wouldn't need to discuss this as a board tonight, but under new business, I would like to have my fellow board members first to discuss at some point, even if it's just the books that are challenged, looking at putting that label in the front that would give some type of a heads up to our students.
A warning label, a warning label of some sort, okay.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to public comment. This is public comment on any items that you would have, would like to speak on. We have public comment.
We do. I'm going to call back Kathy Burnett. She wanted, she's still, you're, you're, you're okay. Got it, never mind. All right, Chanel Chan, Chanel Channing, I am so sorry, Chanel, under reporting of violence.
Greetings, Board. This is actually piggybacking on what was discussed this afternoon with the mental health presentation. When it did discuss fighting, I'm glad that it presented the, the statistics that you have, and actually, it reflects the numbers that I'm, I'm hearing from the Department of Education. I was surprised to actually see it in writing. It's showing that our reporting is actually less than one per school in terms of fights. Now, Volusia, for instance, for last year, Volusia reported 383 fights, and St. John's 173 fights, and we, we reported 29 fights. That's less than three fights per school. The reason I've been bullying, been bringing up bullying over and over again and wanting our parents to be able to come up here and talk about fights is because they're always saying that there's fights. Some of these kids are saying there's fights every day. And if we could just have that on the agenda, it would come out and open. And these, this is, and I know it's now, it's in front of all of you because you all have it because of today, of the presentation, and of course, now I forwarded it once again in the email. These numbers are so low, and Department of Education is considering audit. Before it brings shame to our county and you get an audit by Department of Education, please do an internal audit on these numbers because this is year after year. 29 from last year, but it was, it was eight the year before and four the year before that. Something's seriously wrong. Thank you.
The next speaker is Allison Lauderdale, and this time, she's speaking on state of school.
Just first, I'm not a member of Moms for Liberty. On reducing gaps in education, my kid takes one class at the middle school, Indian Trails. Her teacher has established in her class that any work that receives a 70% automatically gets full credit as 100%. So, I would pay attention to how your teachers are reducing the gaps. Secondly, as far as books go, you say parents can opt their kids out. What media center worker is going to keep control of that? Human trafficking is important, I understand that. There are better ways to educate about human trafficking, as Mr. Furry said, than what is in this book. Ms. Hunt's idea of putting a warning label is interesting. That assumes that kids know what's best for themselves. I have another idea. How about instead of us having to justify why a book doesn't belong, why don't we have a committee that has to justify why a sexually explicit book should be allowed in the first place with no children admitted so that the books can be read aloud? These books are not classics. Who cares if the book is award-winning? I know the publishing industry. Do you know how easy it is to buy your way into a book list? And yes, even to qualify and win an award. That means nothing, and it does not indicate educational value. Sold only had enough money to buy its way onto a finalist's list. It's not a winner. As far as books that Hitler banned, most of the books were actually pamphlets written by a child psychologist whose body of work contained positive views of pedophilia and his own records of him and his assistants sexually abusing children. You won't hear about that part in public school, though. You have to go and find that yourself. So, as far as security, keeping kids safe, you need to focus on internet security if you're worried about trafficking because the reason kids can see worse than is in these books is because the internet in these schools is basically open. I've been in there. It's super easy. Any of the kids know how to get around it. Twitter, by the way, Twitter, has actual porn on it. You don't have to click on anything, all right? All of the schools have open access on the kids' internet to Twitter. It's not hard. Right outside of the middle school, there is a building that has no blocks on the internet whatsoever, and it's under City of Palm Coast internet. So, focus on that. Thank you.
The next speaker is Claudette O'Dowd on multiple items.
Hello, good evening. I wanted to talk about the books. Some people on the board don't find them offensive, and that's sad, and I'm sorry you've been desensitized to that. I feel that the book review committees should at least have a child psychologist on the board to discuss the impacts of the youth when reading these books. And to assume that children are watching worse, that's kind of confusing to me because worse would be like animals involved and BDSM and all of that. That would be, that would be worse. My daughter will be 13 when she enters high school, and in three weeks turns 14. I don't think a 13 or 14-year-old should read books like that. I don't understand the value of it, and if we are to teach about human trafficking, we should have assemblies. I remember having assemblies where people would talk about abuse and talk about who to go to, maybe have the police officers talk about it. That's an option. And, you know, like Mr. Furry said, addressing it in a certain way where you don't have to get into all the graphic detail. Some adults have said, and not just Ms. Massaro, but not sexually aroused, there are a lot of adults who say that they're not sexually aroused by it because we're adults and we have that sense, but a teenager is going through all these hormonal changes, and with the hormones, these are things they don't understand yet, and it can arouse them. And I also wanted to talk about alternate schools. I think alternate schools are amazing. I'm actually one student that went to one. I was bullied a lot, so they put me in there instead of the bullies, but it was good for me because I was able to get through my education. And so, luckily, it wasn't severe violent kids, so I was able to manage and get through it, and I was getting As, Bs throughout. And the school shootings that happened, it's sad that it just happened recently, and my heart goes out to those families. We need to also talk about that where we need to have like a guardian program where we can protect these children because a school shooter isn't going to sign in at the front office. They're not. I think that's wonderful that we have sign-ins so we know who's coming, but some people don't like guns on the premises to protect children. People like that, the school shooters, they like guns. So, we need to have something to protect our children, and we don't have magical powers to make them disappear, although I wish we could, we don't. So, the reality is, we need to defend our children with guns as well. Thank you.
Next speaker is Shannon Rambo on old business.
Board, thank you. I respect your decision. Everybody made a decision on the books, so we'll just move on to the next one, but just know that as long as we're all comfortable talking about them and reading them, that we can read from these books because we're all, we feel okay with that, right? Teachers could read to them, so we could get up here and read them too. So, as far as old business, I'm really concerned about security. Like we said, my heart absolutely breaks for, another school shooting is just, it's mind-blowing. What are we doing here, folks? The guardian program was passed by the previous board they wanted it? That was last year. We've been going through this for so long, and now you've just kicked it down the can, kicked the can down the road again. So, when are we actually going to start implementing? We do need a guardian program. We need a lot more on security. Internet security, I hear that all the time. Parents call that their kid has full access to everything on their iPads, on their, you know, on their laptops and stuff. I do hear a lot. Internet security is another thing. How about all the locking doors, different ways to get in? Have we looked at all of this? Is this all up to par in our schools? I don't feel like it is because I feel like we hear about everything after the fact. It's like, oh, whoops, whoops, we'll do better next time. I want to do better now. Like she said, it's not if, it's when. We know what's happening, this is what's happening. So, we need to be prepared and make sure our students, the staff, everybody is, nobody should be scared to go to school, nobody. And that's to the discipline, too. We've been talking about that for the longest time, the bullying and the discipline. When are we going to have accountability? It's amazing what these kids get by with in school. It is absolutely amazing. If we didn't see it on the internet and hear it from other people, we would never know. And what I don't like either is all the times we've asked for statistics, right? Once again, Mr. Finale, today, he can't give any. He can never give a statistic on anything. We want transparency. We want to know about the fighting, about the bullying. We should be able to see this as parents, you know, go to the school or log in online or whatever. I think he knows more than they, he says, and I think a lot of people do. So, but let's face it head-on, please. Let's all work together. Thank you.
Next speaker is Federico Grosso regarding Superintendent Middlestat.
Board members, Superintendent Middlestat, Chair Massaro. I'm also here as a taxpayer. And I'm not the only taxpayer here. Every single person in this county pays taxes directly or indirectly. We rent, we buy goods, we pay taxes through the homes we own. What happens? Those monies end up in the treasury, and then they're distributed for you to manage for us. The taxpayers entrust you with two duties. First, that you use those monies effectively, safely, and wisely to educate our children so that they become productive, both socially and economically, Americans. Second duty, us as taxpayers will hold you accountable, and we entrust you to make sure you safeguard those monies and you don't waste those tax dollars. For, I was appalled to learn, well, not appalled, but I was quite shocked to learn that Flathead County is in the top 30% of tax-paying counties in the country, even higher than some of the California counties that I became familiar with. We pay a much higher rate in tax dollars than 60% of the other counties in the United States. So, I also recognize that you have a difficult challenge. You face a challenge not only from how to spend those monies, but also from external forces that are out of your control. For example, the governor and the legislature has forced you to use $6 million to send children to private schools. That's $8,000 for 900, 700 kids, 700 kids that have this special privilege, and the rest of the kids are robbed of the opportunity to have that, those monies spent on them. And now, with the vouchers, you can imagine what's going to happen with those monies that you have to safeguard to use effectively. Now, in regards to safeguarding those monies, we want to make sure that you don't waste those dollars. I ask you, what stops this board from assuring that you're not going to waste money by not assuring that Superintendent Middlestat continues her tenure? Should you replace, are you going to have to spend money on having somebody do searches, traveling, interviews, lodging, and all of those secondary expenses? For example, upsetting the school structure system? You're going to disrupt the flow of management, which is going to place additional burdens on staff. So, I ask you, will you assure that you will not waste our hard-earned dollars that we pay in taxes? Because if you do, then I have to ask myself, what is the logical reason here?
Okay, your time is up. Thank you for your words.
The next speaker is Ed Fuller regarding old business evaluation, Superintendent.
I haven't started yet.
I haven't started yet. And I apologize. I know everyone's tired, but first of all, Honorable Chair Massaro, Honorable Colleen Conklin, Oliver Stanley Hunt, Honorable Will Fury, Honorable Kristi Chong, Roy Mera? Am I saying that correctly? God bless you. And Isabella. I hope I did that right, kids. Thank you for serving. First of all, I just want to suggest something to you. I'm not telling you what to do, but you know, you all have the courage of conviction. Congratulations on your election win. It was very hard fought, wasn't it? You believed in trying to make a difference. Well, you're going to make a difference here, but sometimes you have to have all the information you need to make a decision. Now unfortunately for you all, you came on late in the process with Ms. Middlestat. She's the CEO of this, of our school system. You've only had three or four months' experience. I think maybe that's fair to say. It's hard to evaluate for a year, yearly evaluation, if you haven't had a year experience. It's not your fault. That's just the way it's playing out. You can't play Solomon and make up those eight months because you don't have that basis of experience. In the corporate world, there is a doctor called Too New to Evaluate. It's not your fault. That's the situation you're put in. So you can say, and no one is going to criticize you all, say, look, it's just Too New to Evaluate. My suggestion, it's just a suggestion, is if you want to have a yearly evaluation, give her a year's time that you can have that kind of time. It's just unfair to put you in that position and this Middlestat in that position. You don't have a year experience. How can you give a yearly evaluation when you don't have a year with her? You don't have all the data. I believe somebody said, if it's not documented, it doesn't happen. Well, if you don't have the experience, how can you evaluate? I'm just saying. And I heard the deliberation, and I commend you all tonight. It was very thoughtful. It was very professional. And these are just our books. We're talking about the CEO of our Flagler School System. My God, you got to have a whole lot of data. I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm just saying you don't have enough data to do it. Just think about that. And it's okay. Give, you know, give her an extension for a year, then you've got a year of experience. If you choose to retain her, fine. If you don't, that's your business. But you cannot do it based on four months. That's not a yearly evaluation. You got to stand up and say, look, I just don't have enough data. That's okay. No one's going to criticize you for that. Matter of fact, I admire that. If you don't have the answers, you can't put eight months and four and add them together to make 12. I'm just saying, you're very serious, you're doing a great job, you're trying your best, but make sure that you have all the data you need to make that vital, important decision. Thank you, and God bless you. Have a good evening.
Next speaker is Stacy Smith on 1802 Agenda item.
Hello again. I would just like to clarify that I have sat on the bargaining committee for seven years. I attend bargaining conferences and education through FCA myself. I've been the vice president of our teachers' union for seven years as well. I would like to say that I was in the room when Paul Peacock came to us three separate times. We were meeting weekly at those times and said that that insurance ratification rebate was indeed approved by the board. Three times I have it. I am the note taker. I've always been the note taker for bargaining sessions. I have it in my records that he stated. He even bragged to Ms. Hanson of how happy the board was and how happy the superintendent was to work on that. Now, I'm sorry you might not have seen that, but I did speak about that in May at a board meeting. We did come and speak, and I did sit there, and I do have those notes. And it was very hard to sit in the audience today and hear him not tell the full truth. So I thought I would express the full truth in the public light. Number two, I think that book, I have not read that book, but Ms. Conklin, when you're done, I would love to borrow that from you. My take on that book, maybe some child is going to read that in high school and become an advocate for child trafficking. Maybe they're going to read that book and move forward in their college career and work in some kind of capacity in psychology or helping young ladies. I don't know, but I'd hate to think that in a public school, we would deny someone that ability. Last but not least, I would like to say that Superintendent Middlestat has done a great job, and I agree with the gentleman who was just before me in stating that I just think you need to look and you need to get a bigger perspective. I don't think in three months you have the perspective of what has gone on in this district, and she can't be held accountable to the sins of people who've come before her, of practices that she has come into, situations she's come into. I would ask that you take that time, review it thoroughly, and then make a decision. And I know I've personally reached out to every board member through their email and told my story. I have sent you my story. Some of you have decided to reach out to me and some of you haven't, and that's okay. But I know the truth. Thank you.
The next speaker is Eddie Lang regarding general topic.
Good evening, new board. I'm a little disappointed. I actually don't get a cut chance to come to meetings that often because usually we're working, and it's hard to get here, so I was able to come to the meeting today. And you had two proclamations, which were great. I mean, volunteerism, child abuse. I am a parent with a son with autism. April is World Autism Month. I didn't see a proclamation for that. Disappointing because here at, in Flagler Schools, I feel like our kids get left behind. And I'm in the beginning stages. My son's only in first grade. Last year was a rough year. Three teachers and Ms. Conklin, Dr. Conklin, she knows, she knows where I'm coming from because we've had conversations. Ms. Fury, we talked about it. I mean, we had a rough year. I kind of, so I'm a little disappointed, and I'm hoping you remember, maybe next month we can have maybe a proclamation. We have a local organization, Vincent's Clubhouse, that does wonders for this community. I invite you all to our Autism Awareness Festival on April 22nd. It's going to be a lot of services that are needed for this county and, you know, getting people connected. I have to say, though, I would appreciate if the board would take the time. I know you're all liaisons for different schools. Now, I can only speak for Rimfire because that's where my son goes, and I'm pretty sure that's where the ASD elementary, most of them are. Thank them. Ms. Neiman, my son's teacher, Ms. Puccio, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Lee, Ms. Say, Ms. Pedro, they're doing the best they can with what they got. I mean, we still need to improve, but knowing that I'm going to be here probably for the long haul, for 20 years, and my son's going to go through the system, I want to make sure that things are getting better. I don't want to talk to parents now that have kids in the Trails Program that are a little disappointed with the Trails Program. And they, you know, they tell me their, and I'm not going to get into their issues, but they tell me what's going on. It's good to know because I want to make sure that I'm not having those same issues when my son is 20 years old. So again, Rimfire, Mr. Lee, Ms. Pedro, Ms. Say, Ms. Neiman, Puccio, Thompson, you should all thank them because they're doing an amazing job. I can't say enough, but sometimes I feel that Flagler Schools lets our autistic kids down, you know, and I'm not, that's just all I know, and I'm not, all disabilities, I think all ESE Flagler Schools could do better. Ms. Halliday's doing a great job, you know, for what she took over. She's only in her first year, so I want to give her credit as well. But I appreciate it, and thank you for my time.
Chair Massaro, that concludes our public comment for tonight.
We're going to closing comments. We'll start with our ladies at the end that have been sitting quietly. I'm sure they have a lot to share.
Hello. I just have one thing to talk about for my closing comments, and it's in regard to maybe thinking more about next year's calendar. I'm a Kansas student, but I'm also enrolled at the Daytona State College. Our spring break was the third week of March this year, but Daytona State was spring break. Theirs was the second week of March. So while I was on vacation, I still had work due for my Daytona State classes. I had to write an essay, and then while I was on a cruise, so I had to buy the on-ship Wi-Fi to make sure I could actually do my work. So I think next year, maybe we can consider having the same spring break as Daytona State or having the same spring break as some of the other counties near us because I think it would really just be beneficial to the students and families in Flagler County. Thank you.
Come out.
Sure. My closing comments, I just wanted to talk about our teen town hall, which is this Thursday. So I encourage all students to join us. We will have two presenters, and if you have any questions, you can email me or Bella. And yes.
Ms. Chong.
To those that keep undermining the time that we've been here, you know, I know the timing is strange that it just happened this way, but I can only speak for myself. We take this decision very seriously. Personally, I've been visiting several of the schools, meeting with administrators, having conversations. I've talked to our superintendent a few times now. So we take this decision very seriously, and we all have an equal vote, and I think that, you know, that should be respected as well. It's been a long night, so a long day. My only other comments are just a Covenant Nashville School that you're in our thoughts and prayers, and this is a tragedy that we all feel nobody should have to experience. Nobody ever wants to see this kind of situation happen to their babies. So my heart goes out to the parents, staff, and students at Covenant Nashville School.
Yes, my thoughts and prayers go out to the shooting in Nashville as well. Just a tragic event, and I just want to remind, you know, parents and our staff and teachers and our students that, you know, security is our highest priority, and we are working right now, we have been, even up until today, we have been workshopping the guardian program. And I'm hoping that we can one day bring this to Flagler Schools. It will be a great way to supplement our SRDs on our large campuses. But we have to, we have to, it's not something you can just snap your fingers and put it together. And I will say, our security head, Mr. Wuhan, has been working, effort, he's really working diligently with our sheriff to get this right, and I believe we're going to get there. And also, just to speak to, again, our newness, if we're going to call it that. We may be newly elected, but we're not new. Okay? We presented our resumes to the community, and in many of the cases, we were overwhelmingly elected by the electorate based on that and many other things. I have hired, I have fired, I have promoted and demoted in over two decades of business experience. To say that we've only been evaluating the superintendent for just a few months is ridiculous. We have been evaluating the superintendent from the day we signed up to run for this office and as a parent, long before that. And I'll remind the public that these meetings are all public. Private corporations, things are private, but in this, everything is transparent in public education. So there's a lot to evaluate, and we are evaluating the superintendent based on the tool and the strategic plan, but we are all, there's two things. We are also renewing a contract. They are separate things. One may lend to the other, but they are two separate items. They review what happened, whether or not the superintendent's contract was being renewed. And there are many things to consider when renewing the contract. And I will tell you that I am taking it very seriously and doing the due diligence, and we will make what we feel is the best decision for the future of Flagler Schools, I can assure you. And I feel that very confident that the three newly-elected school board members will do the same thing, and so I, I'll leave it there. So and in closing, on a more positive note there, I'm very grateful to have seen our great principals and leaders from our schools today. It was really wonderful to see them and for the community to see what great leadership we have here in Flagler School. Your kids are in great hands. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Just real quickly, I would like to echo my thoughts with the people, the families at Covenant in the greater Nashville area. The only thing I'll share tonight, just for public awareness, for anybody who doesn't know, we are holding an executive session a week from today. Do I have that right, Madam Chair?
Fourth, April 4th.
I think that's a week.
Yeah, I think it's a week.
Where we will be talking about safety. So I know that that is something that all of our parents and staff members and students think about, and that is something, because of the sensitive nature of it, that we do talk about in executive session more in detail than out here in public. So I just wanted to, if I could, just maybe reassure everybody that this is being discussed. I think Will mentioned, this is a, I can't speak for all of my board members here, but it's very much my priority. And so I just wanted, thank you. I just wanted to say that we are discussing it in detail in executive session a week from today for Flagler Schools. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Right ahead, Ms. Chong.
Is that okay? I'll add thoughts and prayers to Nashville. I have to be honest, sometimes it gets so disheartening to continue to offer thoughts and prayers because you would think at this point in time, we would have fixed it somehow, some way. Don't know exactly what the answer is, but it's just, it's just tragic, all the way around. So yes, thoughts and prayers for those families impacted by that just tragic event. I want to thank Judy and Suzie tonight from the Flagler Volunteer Services. I don't know if we all, well, let me speak for me. Sometimes we forget, I forget, how fortunate we are to have an organization like that that coordinates so many people within our community who come and volunteer, again, not just in our schools, but outside of our schools, with our kids and with the elderly and in our communities when we're in the middle of, you know, hurricanes and events that need to be dealt with. So I just, and when you equate that to a financial impact, you know, $2 million in what would be salary, we're very fortunate, and those gals really have poured their hearts and souls into that endeavor for many years now. I want to thank the superintendent and the Ed Foundation for the Teacher of the Year and Employee of the Year dinner last night. It was a wonderful event. It was beautiful at Channel Side. It was great to just hear the directors and the principals and the administrators stand up and talk about on such a personal level their representatives from their schools and their departments. And I think one of the best investments we have ever made possibly over the last several years is connecting kids' hearts. And you saw that. You saw this tenderness as they all went around and talked about who their employee of the year was, their teacher of the year, their rock star rookie of the year was. And it was just, it was a really sweet event. It was just very, very nice. So I want to thank the Ed Foundation, and thank you Superintendent Middlestat, and the Channel Side. It was, it was a great event. It was great to hear from the Boys and Girls Club. I have a soft spot for them, of course. I, you know, hope in the future we can have a conversation about possibly additional clubs. There is such a need. I don't think we can meet the need alone. I think it's going to take creating additional partnerships with other organizations to meet that need for parents who may need that. So I just wanted to acknowledge them coming. So I just wanted to acknowledge them coming. Autism awareness. Eddie, you've got to give us till next month, but we'll make sure that we've got the proclamation in place. And I know that we're working on different improvements in the program, and Kim Halliday is back there. I don't think I've ever met anybody with a bigger heart and more passion and drive to address students with exceptional needs. So we, the only, the last thing I'm going to say, I'm not going to talk about vouchers. I was going to talk about vouchers, but it's 9:15. Nobody wants to hear me talk about vouchers. But I will talk about vouchers in the future. But I do want to share, you know, it's important sometimes when folks come up and they address us, and there are statements that are made that there's either additional data or we need to be looking at the whole picture. When we talk about under-reporting fights, we went from reporting four to reporting 29. It's not under-reporting. When you look at the student population compared to St. John's County, Volusia County, it's all relative. So I would just say, because boy, oh, boy, does it feel like there are, you know, it just feels like there is a tremendous amount of disdain for public education, and I will say that from my visit to Tallahassee. And again, I won't get into the voucher piece, but I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I think for, it's going to be an opportunity for us to look at expanding the opportunities and programs that we have, and we know it's going to happen, so there's no changing it. But there's choice. So if students and parents don't like what is available at public schools, there are other opportunities. If students are not behaving, if discipline is an issue, we have an opportunity to have a zero tolerance and hold the line and say, "Here's a voucher. You are welcome to go attend school somewhere else. That behavior is not going to be tolerated here anymore." So I think we need to start thinking about how we view it. And with that, I'll close.
Okay. Closing remarks. First of all, we have to congratulate the Matanzas High School Wrestling Team, who's number one in the state, and Isabella was part of that team. You know, that's wonderful. Women's wrestling in high school level is the fastest-growing sport in the nation today. Hard to believe. I mean, we never even thought about it in my time, and now it's the fastest-growing sport. So they're going to have their work cut out for them in the future, but it's a good thing. It's a good thing. I'm going to take an opportunity to thank everybody that's participated in our book review groups. Not the choice that they made, but the fact that they took their time. They took their time, they volunteered it, they followed the rules and regulations, and they came up with their answers. Take each book as it comes. That is my motto. Just because I agreed to one doesn't mean I'm going to agree to everyone. Each book is an independent work, and it has to be reviewed that way. And, you know, we'll handle them as they come. You know, we are in free Florida. I get confused about this in free Florida because every time I turn around, people are trying to take freedoms away. And I get, that bothers me. You know, everybody says it's free Florida. It's free Florida. Take this away from people, and that does concern me. But the other thing, too, is we're a parental rights state. We have given parents the right to not allow their children to see certain things or not participate in certain activities. They cannot hear those certain stories or those health tests that they don't want their child to take. They have that right, and that's a good thing. I mean, that's parental rights. That's what it's all about. So I can't make parents exercise those rights, but we have them. We have them, and those are the people that don't want those books read that should utilize that. That's a good thing, and that's something perhaps we don't educate enough about and need to educate more of the community. Couple numbers I want you to think about. 131 and 86. 131 and 86. As of today, there have been 131 mass shootings in the United States. That's 86 days since January 1. 86 days and 131 mass shootings. A mass shooting is defined as four or more people have been killed. You know, I'm not sure where our argument is. You know, it's nice, but I don't know any book that has killed anybody. We need to start looking at guns, and I'm tired of people telling me this, you know, gun advocates, fine. I have a problem with hunting. I have a problem with military-style weapons, whose only purpose with assault weapons is to kill people. That's its only purpose. You cannot survive. These poor children in Nashville didn't have a chance, not a chance. You know, that's where our communities have got to start to stand up and protect our schools. We can only put up so many fences. We can only put in so many safeguards, and you know what? There will always be somebody that's going to try to break it or cause harm and a soft target. Shooter yesterday was going to another school, but they had too much security. So what they do, they went to a private school, in this case, that didn't have that much security, and abused that situation and took advantage of those poor children. It's awful. It is just awful, and we might be creating a system of society that's going to take more and more advantage of those things. So guns is the answer, at least assault weapons. Assault weapons. So it's something we have to keep thinking about. Leadership. Today, we had wonderful presentations from all of our school principals telling us what, where they are in their school improvement plan. It was amazing and wonderful to hear them each say, "We're doing so good. We're doing so good. Our schools are improving." And that's a good thing because pandemic set us all back, sent the whole world back, not just the United States, not just Florida. These things don't happen in a vacuum. It takes a full leadership team to make these kinds of accomplishments. Not only the teachers in the classroom, or the administrators in the building, or the staff in the building, or the support staff, or the custodians, or the bus drivers. It also takes a strong administrative team that's getting the kids where they need to go, and that's a plan. It doesn't happen, oh, by chance. These are all structured to make our kids and our schools excel. So we must keep that in mind, and I do believe that it takes time to learn in education. Education is like no other corporate program, no other corporate program. Education is unique by far, and it takes time. I'm still, I've been doing this now 40-plus years, and still every day I learn something new in education, and it's constantly changing, constantly changing. You can't hold on to anything for any length of time till they change it again. So it takes time. So with that being said, I would like to thank all of you for tolerating us this evening. It's been a long day for every one of these Board members. None of us have eaten dinner, so you know we're all ravenous, to say the least, but I really appreciate you hanging in there with us, everybody. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now that I hear everyone's stomachs growling, I'll keep my comments brief. To our seniors in the diocese today and to our young students down here that I see, I know you have some homework, right? You need to get home and do? No, you had that done earlier? Okay. My point is, we just came off of spring break that leads us to the fourth quarter of the school year. It is the most important time of the school year where our students are starting to synthesize all those learning experiences. And parents, I know you're seeing it, the light bulbs are going off, all right? Teachers are getting excited, but they're also both frustrated in some regard because they have students they still want to move along. So you heard earlier today, all of our principals have recognized areas where they wanted support, and we've pushed in to help provide those support, whether it's further PD, whether it's providing additional resources into the classroom. So we are full-court press to finishing strong on this last quarter to make sure all of our students have equal opportunities to find that academic success that they so deserve. And my last plug, we need to hear from you. Communication. Part of that is we always do an annual communication survey. It stood up right now on our website, so please go into the news item. There's a quick link there and complete that survey. The only way we can do better is to get that feedback from you, so please take time and do that, and we appreciate you. Thank you so much. I'm finished.
All right. With that being said, then I'm going to...